Mr. Wallenhurst, how are you today, sir?
Yeah.
Damn, we got microphones for all of them. Some, some sort of...
I just read something.
I'm gonna move down a little closer, you give Christine a little bit of breathing space. That's all it is. She's supposed to be here. Let's see here. The internet's going to cooperate this soon. There we go.
Yeah.
Yep.
In the time watch, right?
Yeah, the time watch. I gotta take a time out.
Yeah.
For, for the, the public comments, yeah. Do we do that before we roll call? We could probably do it after roll call. Oh, yeah. All right, I'd like to call the order of the Macedonia Planning Commission Public Hearing for May 20th, 2024. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhurst?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Muske?
Here.
All right, and, um, while I don't think it's a conflict of interest, I'm gonna step out for this because I have some business deals with Colvins. I'll be over here. All right, uh, first and only item is, uh, Mr. Colvins with, uh, Valley Reserve LLC seeking conditional use approval to allow a PUD on an R1, in an R1 residential district located 8312 Valley View Road. Is there anyone here from the public to speak to this? Appears not. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Or make the mo, I was just asking for it. I'll make the motion to close the public hearing, then you'll...
I'll second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, public hearing is closed. Brian, would you like, what do you, do you want to just go right into meeting, or do you want to, you're okay?
Um, yeah, I can.
Okay. All right, with that, I think as long as, uh, first applicant, if you're ready, we'll call the regular meeting, we'll just do it now. So I'll call the regular Macedonia Planning Commission meeting to order. Uh, roll call again, Mr. Roberts, you wanna come back for a second?
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhurst?
Here.
Ms. Muske?
Here.
All right, and first item is approval of the April 15th, 2024 meeting minutes. Anybody have any comments? No. Anyone wanna make a motion? I'll motion approve.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the first item, Mr. Roberts, I assume you're going to...
Yep. While I don't think it's a conflict of interest, I'll still remove myself.
All right. All right, the first item is Mr. Colvins with Valley Reserve. Would you like to come on up? Good, how are you? You know, Mr. Colvins, could you get your notes recorded?
Uh, Chris...
Yeah.
Dan Barskowski.
All right. Uh, so first is the, uh, I guess we'll kinda be looking at these at the same time. It's, it's the conditional use approval, as well as the preliminary approval for the PUD. I know you had been in here before with a development in the same area. I think you got approvals at that time, but I don't know if you wanna give us an update to what has occurred since then?
Yeah, we did get approval a few years back, uh, for 14 lots. There were single-family lots, uh, little larger lots, uh, with the, uh, going to final phase of drawings. We had some issues with storm water, and it would work, but just didn't work out the way I wanted it to work out. So we, uh, I acquired an additional, um, property to the west. It is under approval of, of this, um, you know, of this plan, uh, the conditional approval. And, um, it would consist of more lots and smaller lots, so which would require PUD.
How much more land did you acquire? You acquired extra land?
I did, yeah. I mean, the original... Yeah. The original parcel was, um, was 10.5 roughly, and the new parcel was 18.8 in Macedonia and then, um, another 123 acres in Hudson. So it's there, just because it's sliced, you know, so... Uh, puts it at, uh, in Macedonia, 29.3. Is that what you had?
I had, your parcel's 19.53. So 29.33.
29.3, yes, we're wrong. So roughly 30 acres.
Yeah, 30, okay. Okay. Well, if you don't mind, we maybe, uh, ask our review guys for their comments. Mr. Franz, would you like to go over your councils?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So my report dated April 27th. Um, as the applicant stated, the project's gotten a little larger. Previously, 20,000 square foot, sort of conventional subdivision lots. Now looking at, um, the request being 61 single-family lots developed as a planned unit development. And so I just thought maybe we'd take just a quick second to see how we get through this process of it being a planned unit development and a conditional zoning certificate. So essentially, the code has two ways to do a planned unit development for residential purposes. Within the R1 district under 116302A5, calls out planned unit developments as a conditional zoning certificate. And then if you track the code past the multifamily district to 116305, you have a planned unit development district. That being a separate district that you rezone to, that's not the request tonight. So this is request under 116302 for a conditional zoning certificate. And so within that, there are, um, links back to the planned unit development district for performance standards requirement in 116305. But, um, the code specifically states when doing this as a, um, conditional zoning certificate, you need, uh, planning commission approval and then confirmation majority of councils. So you, so whatever happens here, provided it's approved, the conditional zoning certificate, you then would need a majority, um, approval from city council. And then, added to that, um, all the standards of, uh, 116305, which is the development district standards, those standards apply with the exception of the maximum density. In 116305, it grants different density than 63025A, which caps it at two units per acre. So this request for a conditional zoning certificate's capped at two units per acre. And then, um, it speaks to, uh, the type of housing that you can, you can have, single-family, two-family townhouses with a max of four units per building. Then it speaks to the maximum density in, uh, any single acre, and that can't exceed six units, which is different than in the planned unit development district. So you're capped to a density of two units per acre, and any given acre, you're capped to six units. And I know there's some question about how that's calculated. And actually, the more seasoned members, I would say, I don't wanna say older, the more seasoned members of the commission may remember, we had this same discussion a while back. I think it was on the Petros Development, Northwoods. And, um, effectively, it's, it's a square. A square that gets laid down on, on the plan to determine the number of units per acre. So it's very fancy, literally a square. And so when you lay that on there, and we'll talk about it in my report, where there are some deficiencies and however you, you know, choose to overcome those. So that's how that's, um, calculated. So now that we're past the, how do we get it to be a conditional zoning certificate, the densities and things, I've just gone through in pages two and three of my report and then analyzed the proposal accordingly. So, um, under page two, under analysis, 116202A, and then, uh, A5, and then 113704. So this is the R1 standards for a conditional zoning certificate, and then the conditional zoning certificate section of the code. So my first comment, um, is just a, you know, depiction issue in the table. The, um, the table, the site data table, um, shows that the maximum permissible density is five units per acre, as I just sort of outlined, it's capped at two units per acre. And then, I wasn't sure exactly, the, the Summit County Arters website shows the three parcels totaling 28.32 acres. And I think the table shows 29.7 acres. Um, so I, I think the 28.32 maybe doesn't include right away. And then if that's the case, that would be the, the number that we'd measure then off of the two units per acre. So that would put us at, uh, 56.64, and the instance over half would round up to 57 for planning purposes. So relative to this issue, there's, um, the, the issue is the density exceeds the code requirement. So either the applicant can seek a variance for that, or design differently according to the two units per acre. Then under 116202A5C, states that the maximum density in any single acre can't exceed six units. Using a, a one acre square, which is roughly 28.7 by 28.7, proposal exceeds six units in any given acre in, in multiple locations. Um, it depicts upwards of eight units in a given acre in, in several locations. So my comment was that, um, the site should be redesigned to comply with the maximum of six units in any given acre, or seek a variance from the board of zoning appeals. Then 113704 requires proposed streets to be shown on a conditional zoning certificate plan. Um, this is the general development plan. Uh, the proposed plan depicts two phases, with phase one containing 38 sublots, 1238, and phase two, 23 sublots, 39 through 61. The private street for phase one terminates just south of sub lot eight and ends abruptly, with no provisions for emergency vehicle turnaround. It's a technical issue, and it can be worked through, and I'm sure the applicant's already started looking at that, but some sort of temporary cul-de-sac with turnaround acceptable for emergency responders will need to be provided between the phases, unless you cross the phasing with the roads and you do it all once, then it would be a moot point. I'm assuming you were planning on phasing everything by, by what I just described.
Yeah, I mean, we are, yeah, am planning on phasing at this point. Could change, yeah.
So then just some sort of temporary measure, you know, acceptable for emergency responders. And then taking a look at 116305, which again is the planned unit development district standards that the code tracks over to from 11620, 6202A5. And so 116305E3 requires usable open space, parking areas, drives and setbacks between units. Uh, so the summary table depicts 17.29 acres of open space, 58%, but doesn't depict the composition of what that land is. So just for compliance, some illustration to, to, um, depict exactly how the 17.29 acres is being achieved. Keeping in, keeping, you know, in mind, there's the exclusions of what's not allowed to be part of open space. You probably have it, but just, I would just show it in some form or fashion. The front set, the front yard setback, um, under 1166305 is actually established by the planning commission pursuant to the general development plan, which we have in front of you tonight. Proposing includes a 25-foot front yard setback, and I just state that, um, the setback does require approval of the planning commission. For reference, multifamily monuments in the R2 district require a 25-foot front yard setback. I don't think it's unreasonable what the applicant's asking for, but it does require formal action of the commission to accept that. Uh, 116305G2 requires 30 feet between buildings, and the proposal is to permit 15 feet. So that's seven and a half foot side yard setbacks per unit. Um, so either you would need to redesign, or seek a variance from the board of zoning appeals for that. 116305H1 requires, um, private streets to effectively be designed as public streets. Requires street trees, lights, curbs, sidewalks. Um, sidewalks and curbs can be waived by, waived by the planning commission and by city council, provided adequate, um, alternative means for drainage and pedestrian movements provided. So either there would need to be a redesign to include sidewalks, or provide alternative means for pedestrian movement. And when the applicant came back previously, they had asked for no sidewalks, and the planning commission seemed fine with it. So maybe it's a walking path in the perimeter, within the open space, something, but you just have to provide something to comply with that, that standard. Um, preliminary building architecture, architecture is required with the general development plan, so that will need to be submitted. Covenant restrictions also required to be submitted, so that, that will have to be submitted for the future request. And then all information contained in 116305I is required. Um, and so that, that information will be needed at the same time. And then as it relates to the subdivision regulations, um, 1117, this is a subdivision, even though it's within a planned unit development, when you divide off lots in accordance with the subdivision regulations for a major subdivision. So 111701C generally prohibits new street openings within 600 feet into existing intersection. The proposed street on the Valley View Road is shown approximately 340 feet from the Valley View Twin-Triborough intersection. And my comment to that is eliminate the ingress and egress from Valley View Road and cul-de-sac the road just beyond sub lots 22 and 23. This will create one-way and, and outward walk-in adjacent from Eileen Drive, which likely will not necessitate the need for a traffic signal. Our city engineer should review this matter. Um, and then additionally, the cul-de-sac will likely exceed the code permitted 600 feet, but the planning commission can waive that standard pursuant to 111701K2 of the code. I see no issue with the length of the cul-de-sac. I feel pretty strongly that there shouldn't be another through-street-out-the-valley-view that should cul-de-sac. But that's something that the commission can determine. And again, just as I said, 111701K2 does allow for that deviation of the, the exceedance of the 600 feet, and the cul-de-sac is about 618, so the commission would need to, um, waive or approve that standard. And so in conclusion, I feel there's multiple picture items that need to be addressed before the plan can progress. Specifically, the overall density, the maximum total dwelling units per acre, and then the secondary street access would require either redesign or variances from the board of zoning appeals and exceptions from the planning commission. I can answer any questions you have.
So I guess we start from the beginning.
Yeah, no, I think...
Yeah, I'm in my line. And I guess, uh, starting off with, uh, the, uh, the density, uh, you know, under the PUD district, a different density than, um, uh, than what the residential, uh, there's a small blip in there that, about the six units per acre. Uh, but when you get into the PUD standards, it's fairly lengthy, um, paragraph on what, it's five, five units per acre of the development, and, uh, I think it's up to 12 units per square acre. So I guess my question is, uh, based on past developments, I have, you know, a list of every development, every, you know, planned unit development, single-family detached, uh, within the past 20 years, and, uh, the density that they were allowed without a variance. So I guess my first question to the committee is, you know, what does, um, why, why would this require a different district, you know? Versus, um... My last one. Top one was mine, and I had approved here a couple of years ago. So we have 10 units per acre in that one. Uh, the reserves at Northwood that you've mentioned was 10 units per acre. Villas of Teramina, which, um, Mr. Cox lives in, uh, was 12 units per acre in Giladi Design. So, none of those needed variances for approval, although we did, in Villas of Teramina, detached a couple of units at the very end, and we needed a variance for that. But, um, the question, I guess, is why, why, why has, I don't know that the code has changed since any of these were put in place. And same thing with that, I know it's jumping ahead, but the side yard setback. Most, if not all, these are 15-foot side yard.
15 total.
Uh, between units.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've used...
Separation.
Yeah, some of them are, uh, two foot from property line, uh, and then eight foot on, or 13 foot on the other side. It all depends how they shift within, uh, the, the lots and the spacing. So those are my questions.
Well, I, I mean, I, I suppose I can answer as, as much as I can answer, so...
Yeah.
I know, just looking at, um...
I mean, the code is fairly clear.
Yeah, the, the Villas of Teramina is in the RC, the, um, senior citizen residential district, which allows up to 12 units per acre. So that's, that's an easy one to answer. Some of these others I'd have to go through, but, um, I mean, you know, who, what, where, when, and why? I don't know on these other ones, but it's pretty clear that it's two units an acre when you're doing it as an overlay district from the original R1 zoning district.
I, I agree with the two units per acre. I mean, I mean, that, I guess according to the code it's five, but, uh, we're, we're with some of the, we haven't finished our wetland impact, uh, studies. So some of that, we will lose some units. So, you know, we ended up at, we're gonna end up with, uh, you know, three, four, or five units less than what I found. So the maximum density is not an issue, it's more the per acre density that is, uh, was not used in, in the past, so that's...
So I wanna go back, the maximum density is not five. You said the code says five, it's two units per acre. You, what you're doing is you're referring to or mixing the two, the two different issues. There's a zoning district that's a planned unit district that you rezone to. Statually, you'd have to rezone, go through council, and get to that district. Once you become a PUD district, all of these standards under 116305 apply, and not 116302A5.
So you're saying when you have a conditional use, you do not...
You're not rezoning.
So you're saying like Spruce Hill was rezoned?
I don't remember, I mean, I know you did Spruce Hill, I know I worked on that at one point, and I swear we talked about the maximum units per acre, but I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but the original phases, I, I really wasn't involved in those. But it, to get that density, you'd have to rezone to it. When you use, stay in the R1 zoning classification and overlay a planned unit development, it's capped at two units per acre.
Again, we're gonna end up with that two units or less.
Yeah.
So it's not gonna be an issue.
Yeah.
Not an issue. So, I mean, we do have up, up to 30 acres if we round up, that's 60 units. We're gonna end up in the, you know, 50, 56 to 58. Not, you know, the bigger issue is the six units per acre, which, um, again, is not, uh, this would be the only community in the city of Macedonia that was kept to that guidelines, so...
Well, I know North, what's, what was the previous one?
I was on this committee when we approved Northwood.
Yeah.
And, uh, there was no talk about six units, and it's now 10 units per acre that they have, that that was approved at.
Yeah, 10 units in any given acre, is what you're saying.
Take that square and you work it around.
Yep, I know we ta, I'm positive we talked about it then, bec, you know, again, I've used this multiple times, but regardless...
Yeah.
The code is the code, I mean, it, under 116302A5, A, B, and C, it sets the standard when using a planned unit development as an overlay approved as a conditional zoning certificate. It says right here, the maximum density in any single acre shall not exceed six units. I mean, it's black and white. So I don't, I don't remember all the other ones, but that's what this says. I don't know how we got to some different standard previously, without going back and looking at that.
Yeah, unless the code's changed, I don't know.
I don't think it has, I mean, it's been in place since 89.
Yeah, that's my point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know, I mean, if the city administration could look into that, I don't know the answer.
All right, I mean, that's, that's, that's probably the, I mean, the, the two units per acre, we're gonna get there whether we, you know, we want to or not.
Yeah, the 57, you're not necessarily disputing the overall density, it's just the, in any given acre.
Any given acre. Yeah, go ahead.
So from, I guess, our side of the table, I think the most difficult part, um, is interpreting the rules for that square. It, so you put the square, I mean, could you give me an example of a spot where it exceeds the, the six?
So if it touches a two-foot corner of a garage, does that count as a, a unit?
If it falls within it...
It doesn't explain that.
Doesn't. That's why it wasn't used in the test.
Right.
Yeah, it wa, it was used in the past, Chris. We've talked about it here, maybe you weren't here.
Yeah.
But it has been discussed. But it has been discussed, because we, he brought up the square, we laid it out. It has been discussed. You're stating things that aren't true.
I think it was in Spruce Hill at one time.
Yes.
Similarly, it was approved as ten units per given acre.
Okay, well, don't say that it wasn't used when it was used.
So, I mean, it's hard to see, I'd be glad to pass my chicken scratch down, but if you just start right at Valley View, twenty-two, nineteen, six, twenty-six, that direction, there's eight units that fall within that square. I may have to shift that square a little bit south, and they're still in it. So that, right there, is an example. So I did in orange, I showed where the eight exceed. I mean, right here, it's easy to tell they're going to exceed.
That's the one spot that I got it, right there.
Yeah, there's eight here.
But does the entire, are you looking at the lots? Or you, what has to be in the square, the whole lot?
The unit itself, the lot, or you want to call it the, not the building itself, but the pad is within that.
So if you move that pad down, that square down to say a lot, I don't know, let's.
If I take that down.
Yeah, just say you take it west fifty feet or twenty-five feet, and it would put ten units within that space. I mean, are you going from the outside of the units, or part of the unit? I guess that's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, I went from the outside of the lot. In this instance, you can see, I mean, if I moved it down to the pad, the building pad, it makes it better.
But like, if you started with, where you had it at the back of the lot line, it's, you're only covering part of the houses on twenty through twenty-two, so you counted those as a whole unit.
But it's part of the house, you can't count part of the house.
But you counted it as half of a house, or is it a whole house?
It's a whole house.
Because when you look at density, density is.
Even it's a whole.
It's a whole.
Yeah. Well, I don't know what the code defines that that way. But again, I, you know, I know we've had this conversation at the planning commission level a few other times, and it's always just been, you know, you start to lay out an acre to see where there's issues, and, I mean, again, this is pretty evident. If I just did the pad, it's going to take more of it in.
But I guess to answer our question, if, the way you calculate that, if there was just a little sliver piece of a, of a building envelope that we had, you counted it as a whole unit?
Well, in most instances, it's not just a little sliver piece. I mean, you can see right here.
Or like.
That's, you know.
When you're twenty-three through twenty-three.
Yeah, it's the front, it's the front of these units.
Yeah, you're just like, basically, a quarter of the unit is touching, so now that is considered.
Well, again, if I just use the building pad, it's half of the unit.
So that'd be four, six.
I mean, you know, the commission could do, I suppose, do something differently. There's no, the code just defines what the acreage is, you know, that it's.
It doesn't give specifics.
Yeah, it doesn't tell you exactly.
And then that's the problem.
Yeah, I understand. It just says that it's a square in shape, approximately two-hundred-and-ten feet per side.
And I think that where you have that, where the units back up to each other, I think that's non-disputable. I think that's.
The, here.
They're for sure.
Yeah.
And we agree with that. I think it's where, you know, the entrances, or where you just have a road with lots on both sides. I think the way we would look at that is, if you cover the whole footprint on one side of the road, you're on halves on the other, so that would be six.
So where's it go? Because it, like, back in your lots, twenty-three and twenty-two, you cover the whole lot, but then when, you'll know you don't here.
Yeah, if you, I mean, if you just go to the building envelope and use that as a standard, and the commission could make that interpretation, then the entire twenty-three to three-twenty-six are included, and a little more than half, probably sixty percent of nineteen through twenty-two, or twenty-two through nineteen, if you just use the building Which doesn't favor you. So if you go to the outside, then it's.
Oh, yeah, I guess that's our question. Is it going from the outside? Or is it, what if you move that west, and you actually cover, you're touching more units, so you could get that, I mean, under your, it's just not clear, the code isn't clear, so we weren't sure how it was going to be measured. Do you see what we're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I understand.
So you could touch ten percent of a unit if you pushed that box west, and then it would cover actually more units.
I don't know, I mean, you got to pick a point to start.
Yeah.
So this is easy to pick here, right?
The code doesn't, but I mean, that's why we want to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So in this instance, this is an easy spot to pick, right? I mean, either I use the building envelope, or I use the whole footprint of the lot. If I use the footprint of the lot, that's that orange line. If I use the building envelope, that orange line slides down to about here on nineteen through twenty-two. So in that instance, that doesn't do you any good, but either way, it definitely is part and parcel with nineteen through twenty-two. Building envelope-wise, it encompasses most of it. So I think it just, we want to be consistent with, just consistent with how that's interpreted, but it's got to be done in some way. The code says it's number of units in any given acre.
So if you push that setback back on the southern lots, that would take them out of that one.
Wait, the code reads as any given unit in that many acres, so I would say any given, if it units in that acre, in a portion of it, then it's, it's considered in that, it's considered against it, essentially, that's the way I would understand it.
Yeah, so I'll read you exactly what the code says. It says the maximum density in any single acre shall not exceed six units. And then, that's in the eleven sixty-three oh two, and then it speaks to it again in the PUD chapter, it says maximum density of any one acre within the valet shall not exceed twelve units. For the purposes of a section, an acre shall be approximately a square in shape with approximately two-ten feet per side. So I agree, it doesn't give you gobbledzit direction of how you apply that.
It's all subjective.
But you have to have some consistent application. So either you're going to do, you're going to do the building footprint, or you're going to do the total lot, corner to corner in the total lot. And then, I suppose, the commission needs to say whether, what constitutes.
But if a house falls within a lot, a house falls within a lot, that's, that's, that's density against that acre, I would say, correct?
If a house falls within the building footprint, it's arguable that that's density in a given acre.
Let's have a seat.
We have a question, Kevin. Two questions. If you had to get a variance, because it says, Brian says you can try for a variance, you didn't want to do that, would you use this as part of your argument that all these other lots were apparently approved without a variance?
Of course.
If you had to do it that way?
Of course.
I mean, that's an alternative for you, rather than. And the other question I have, you said part of this is in Hudson. Do you have to go through the planning commission of Hudson to get some kind of?
Well, we're not, we weren't counting the acreage in Hudson. So that square is its own parcel number. That's its own parcel, so.
That's just going to be vacant land there?
It will be vacant land, part of the, but it's in a, that is in a wetland, so it's not used anyway. It'll just become green space as part of the site. Without using that, we are, we are at, right around sixty units.
Yeah, I get you.
We will not end up at sixty.
No. That's my two questions.
I guess the other thing, I mean, we have six, almost sixty percent green space, so open space. Probably forty percent of that, we know we need to clarify it, but it's going to, so we're going to have double what we need that we're preserving.
Almost triple.
So part of that, the part of the spirit of a PUD is to preserve space and increase density. And by this code, we will push units into that green space and really take away the spirit of a PUD in most communities. I mean, I'm just, if you look at that.
All right, so those are your comments. Mr. Giladi, you have anything?
I do. I'm finding my paperwork, sorry. All right. You guys have probably seen my memo. I'll try to go through it quick. Mine are probably not as pressing as Brian's. You guys are proposing a PUD with twenty-four-foot pavement. I think twenty-four foot is good, that's consistent with other similar projects in the past. The note says, per city standards, the pavement would be constructed on the next to middle. If you could show that typical section, please. This is just a suggestion, that straight shot that runs north-south from sublot one down to about sublot forty. Might be nice to have some curvature or sinuosity, or some type of feature to break that up, make it a little more appealing. I can read the plan, I think I know what's going on, but the contour lines weren't labeled. Dan caught you on that one, sorry. Way on the far west end of the stream, site, you show a stream with the blue line, so we would have a repairing setback around that stream. I'm sure you're far enough away that it's not a problem, but we should show the repairing setback on the plan, so we know we're in conformance. Chris, this goes back to the last time you worked on this site. I don't recall what the status was of the environmental and wetland permitting. I think you went through it, but I don't remember what the status was, or if it's still valid, so that would have to be, either it needs to still be valid, or you got to get a new one, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, I think that we had, we didn't permit the wetlands, but.
Did not?
But we did get EPA approval, and that was probably expired.
I'm wondering if it's expired.
Yeah, the wetland has not, though.
Okay. Yeah, so that'll all need to be, we'll need to make sure that's up to date before we go forward, obviously. You showed two stormwater ponds, great, thank you, appreciate that. Obviously, Dan will do the calcs when we get to that point, and we'll need to do the usual stormwater inspection and maintenance agreement that we've done in the past. Sanitary sewer, we'd ask, you're showing it under Twin Bird Road, we'd ask that it be bored. Pavement's still in good shape, there's a fair amount of traffic over there. Private utilities, we ask those to be installed in conduit, not direct bary. Plan shows, is there a gas well, or some sort of well on the site?
On the eleven acres, it was capped a few years back.
Okay.
And plugged, and then the one on the additional acreage would be plugged.
Same thing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, when that happens, just make sure you let us know, let the building department know, please. Where did I leave off? Streetlights, per the city standard, please. This one is just a suggestion, we already have a preserve at Valley View here in the city. We also have a preserve lane as well. The names are all kind of similar, I hate for there to be some sort of confusion. I don't know if it's a big deal or not, I don't know if you guys have a problem in an emergency.
There has been in the past, similar, similar street names. Plenty more names to choose from.
Street names, street names were pulled out of the air, so I did, did it down like any change.
Yeah.
The Valley Reserve, or the Valley Reserve was, I mean, we did approve that for the original fourteen lots.
Okay. So it sounds like the concern is the street names, not necessarily the subdivision names?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't think we did.
Yeah, we kind of, I thought we did.
Yeah, there's no street names shown on this here.
Oh, okay, yeah.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, we just kind of, I remember just, you had asked about that, I was like, wow, okay, babe.
All right, yeah, so maybe that's not an issue when you name the streets, we'll just make sure they're not the same, or very close to an existing street name. And then we'll have to do the standard development agreement between the city and yourself as developer, done that in the past as well.
So I guess the one thing on your notes is, you know, you wanted to change the curvature for the character, and the big question is, and it goes back to some of Brian's notes, was the through-street, and the original street was just the cul-de-sac street with fourteen lots. It was in the exact same location as this. Now, it didn't go through, so, but I don't see it as a cut-through. I mean, it'd be easier just to go to the stoplight and turn, but if we are going to change that to a cul-de-sac, I don't know, is that the committee's job to decide that or not? Well.
Doesn't, it doesn't be a standard, so I think it's more of a technical issue, I think, than like an opinion on ours, is that correct, because of the distance?
Yeah.
My personal opinion, we'd like it to go through, it was approved at one time, being in that location, you know, I don't see it as a cut-through, but, because it is actually less distance to go to the main road.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, being in this area, that that came up with because of cut-through, or more of a, it's just too close to the intersection, and you could have backups and things like that, or difficult to get out necessarily, whereas if you got, what's it, six-hundred-and-fifty feet?
Six-hundred feet.
Six-hundred feet, yeah, you got a lot more chance to get back beyond a queue, you're not cutting through a line of traffic to get out, various things. Like, that was the intention. Yeah, I don't see it being a cut-through necessarily.
I guess, Fire, do you have any, any besides the street names, any thoughts?
Nothing at this time.
So I guess the issues are the, you know, six units per, the density issue, and then the, and then whether we need to cul-de-sac that or not.
Okay, may I ask a question?
Please, please.
So why, did you lay this out as a conventional subdivision by chance?
What's that?
Did you lay this out by chance as a conventional subdivision?
Did I?
Yeah, did you?
Yeah.
Did you do a layout, an alternative layout of comparison layout?
Oh, you're saying it's an R1 without the PUD?
You're correct.
No, we didn't.
Because you, you know, I never really understood why you chose the PUD route, because it's just more layers, and you really don't get anything, but that was your, I mean, listen, I don't make those choices, but, I mean, you know, my calculation, even if I use the twenty-eight-point-three-two, the acreage, you, under a conventional standard half-acre subdivision, not quite half-acre, you'd get sixty-one-point-six-eight or sixty-two units. You may not be able to get those, right? You still may be capped at fifty-seven. You'll be at your units, but you won't have the restriction of any given acre, so, you know, it might be worth doing a parallel plan just to see how it lays out as a conventional development. You really don't gain much on the planned unit development as a conditional zoning certificate. You're not getting a density bonus.
You're, no, but I think just working around some of the site features, you know, are.
You could build less infrastructure.
What's that?
You build less infrastructure, PUD, correct, wise.
That's, that's your, that's about it.
That's the advantage.
That's about it, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, it just, often, our code doesn't require it, but I always encourage, you know, a parallel plan be developed, just to see how it, and usually when I work on behalf of developers, it's to prove that the code is better to do it the other way, but.
Yeah.
To, I don't know, I would lay it out as conventional to see.
I know in the original eleven acres, we did several different plans, but this one we really were, you know, I was looking at one direction toward the size of lots we wanted.
Yeah, again, you don't have to, I'm just suggesting that, you know, if it lays out at the same number of units, you don't have the headache of dealing with the number in any given acre, but that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess, you know, from, I have, there's history with me in the, in the city, and it's, you know, density has never been an issue. Like, you know, I'm looking at some of the residents. And that's why, when this popped up, I was like, I don't even, well, that must not be right, was my first initial thought.
So again, I feel like there's a little mixture of some different things going on, like, for example, the Villas of Teramina, that's a separate zoning district. So that one's easy to point to.
Yeah, I looked at that a little closer, yeah.
It's, it's the senior residential district. Gives you 12 units per acre. It's right in the code. So, you know, without going and looking at every one of those to understand it, I seem to remember that we had this exact conversation with, with the Spruce Hill. I really feel like we talked.
That's the only one I know of for sure. That was before I was involved in it, though.
Yeah.
Then we went for final approval and it was, I don't know, but the rest of them, like Northwood, I don't have to see the notes because I have, I knew that there was a lot of discussion about the emergency driveway that never got put in. But that is, I don't remember anything about density there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we just have to look back and see.
Yeah, yeah. But, I mean, we want, you know, I'd definitely look at, look at that, so.
Well, it sounds like there's definitely some things you guys have to look into. Some of these you may have to decide if you want to go for a variance.
I guess the one thing I did get clarity on, sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
What was, like, so we have this one, you have this square, and so you're saying, like, if one unit, like, a tenth of a unit touches that square, oop, that's a whole unit, or is it calculated? It doesn't say that in the code. But, so it's really the planning commission's interpretation of that. So, I mean, and I think in that, in that instance, you would look at, you know, past approvals and figure out whether, you know, how we would want to see that approved. Because, yeah, I don't, see how, ooh, if it touches that, I mean, you can turn that square in every direction and make it, try to touch a foot or two of a unit and go, aha, you can't put a unit there. And that seems.
No, I think it's just shifting some of the units a little bit away from there. I mean, if a unit falls in, then just push it out. Push it all the way.
Yeah, but if you're talking, if you set it up like Brian did, then it works out much simpler if there's an interpretation.
But if you try, if you start rotating it.
Yeah, if you really wanted to be, if I was trying to stick it to you, I could probably twist it, yeah. And, yeah.
Yeah, I promise you, that was not the case. I just believe Brian already.
No, I'm not saying it wasn't. I'm just saying there's no interpretation in the code that says.
So you're looking for some direction from the commission?
So we have no direction, yeah.
Yeah. And they can, I mean, again, I think you have two choices. You either use the lot or you use the building envelope.
Based on the way you laid it out, it looked like it wasn't gonna help, it was gonna hurt more than.
If you use the building envelope, it will. In that one example, we were.
Yeah, I think if you stick it to the, to the lot, try and do it in a systematic way, not to just, you know, we're out to get and see how many we can squeeze in there. I think none of us have a problem with the way Mr. France did it. So I think if you kind of look at it like he's looking at it, I'm sure you could bounce some things off if you needed to. But I think, yeah, like a systematic way, kind of working your way down through it. Not, you know, okay, this is a square, but I can also look at it halfway over the, you know, no, here's one, here's the next one adjacent to it, adjacent, you know, not try and make all kinds of things overlap.
So I think in the past, though, it was with Spruce, and I'm just going, going off, so your recollection was, he was like twisting that thing around. And again, I wasn't involved in that approval one at all, so.
Yeah, I know I put together quite a few exhibits. I just don't know what was decided on, because I wasn't at the meetings. I know I looked at adjacent, any six adjacent lots. We didn't go across the road. I think that's what we did. We just looked at six units and took the total acreage of the lots. But.
Whatever it is, we ended up with 10, 10 greater.
So, I mean, I guess with that discussion, the ball would then, maybe, maybe it would be in our court to come up with something. But what about the side yard setback? Those are too big.
The side yard setback, do you have any? Well, is this, let me look back how you worded that, Mr. France. Is that a, it's in the rules and the only relief is a BZA appeal? That's what it looks like, what you said there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to go back to my. That 30-foot reverts back then to the PUD standards, so you're taking it out of residential, which is 10, 10, and then it puts it back in the, oh, well, under PUD standards, say 30.
So it's, it's a little bit of, you can't have your cake and eat it too, but that's what the code does. The code says you follow the PUD development district standards except, except for these three items. Density, overall density units per acre, the overall number of units in any given acre, and then the number of units that can be attached, I think was the third one, which is irrelevant in this instance. So the code's very clear. It does those, it mixes them, but predominantly you're using the PUD performance standards, with the exception, when you do it as an overlay within R1, you have to follow these three items outside the PUD standards, which are the ones I just mentioned.
Yeah, again, going back to this, I mean, there's nothing, not a single development that follows a 30 feet.
That's 30 feet inside, too, so it'd be 60 foot.
30 combined.
Oh, it was a 30 combined?
Yeah.
15, 15.
I mean, you have to probably have to do some digging, because I recall somebody getting a variance, which could be one or more of those.
We did on our phase four in Villas of Teramina, we had some units that were platted at 20 feet, and there was like six units. I'm sorry, I don't remember the details. Mayor Minger, he said, well, we need should go because it was already approved. Everything else was approved at 15 feet by planning commission. Just, that's your choice to make that decision. But with these, we're at 20. And we split them up. That's what it was. They were, those last units on Jennifer were, were attached units. And we split them up, made them 35, had 15-foot spacing. And we needed a variance for that, because planning commission had already approved the plat. That's how it went.
Yeah, we replayed it.
Yeah, that was the whole phase. But then we still kept, I think, six units, and then we split them up at the end.
Okay.
And those needed a variance.
So again, again, I don't, I don't know, I don't recall how we did all of the various ones. But it is supposed to be 30 feet space between buildings. So, I mean, you can either achieve it or try to go to BZA, I guess. I don't know any other way.
Is that something that we would go to BZA first, or we'd come back here with a new plan?
Good. So we'd have to go to BZA with a hypothetical situation. That's, this is saying we should have went to BZA before we came here. But we would have gone to BZA and say, well, we don't have an approved plan, but we need this, this, and this variance.
Yeah, that's okay.
Really?
Yeah, there's definitely.
We don't have a developing yet. It's not approved.
We changed the code, we changed the code to allow for a direct variance. So it makes it easier. You could go and show them your plan and say, this is what we want to do, and here's why. Here's the nine so-called Duncan factors. Boom, boom, boom. You explain how you advance each of those factors. The board will weigh your evidence and determine if a variance is granted. If they grant that, you come here and say, okay, it's irrelevant about, you know, this side yard setback or the distance between buildings, because BZA approved it on this day. And so that's already done. Yeah, so you could.
Or we could do it in reverse, where you approve the plan pending these variances.
Sure, they, they can. They've done that before, for sure. But, you know, I think the record will reflect that the issue is there and you need to go for a variance. So that's up to, up to this group. I don't have a problem with it, but that's up to the planning commission.
Well, something that, that's gonna definitely affect the layout. I mean, if it was, I'm trying to think of a different one that I know we've, okay, if you go get your BZA approval, yeah, I forget. And maybe there's a backup plan with it. I don't have as much problem with that. If you don't get it, okay, then you've got to shrink your sign down to 32 square feet or something like that. This one, it's gonna drastically affect the entire layout. I hate to have us approve something that, that, that if they don't approve one or more of them, is gonna, you know, you're gonna be redrawing the whole thing. I think there's enough issues that are probably, you know, that should come back. I know there's one issue that, that we're gonna have to weigh in ourselves, and that was the front yard setback, 25 feet. I guess we have to formally approve that. I've got no problem with that, just for that information. I don't think anybody's got a problem with 25-foot front yard setbacks.
Which one is that?
That was on page, it was number two on the second page at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So we gotta take a formal action on that. I assume kind of when we do everything else, but I don't see a problem with you getting that. Just, yeah, I can't speak for everybody. I don't think that's gonna be an issue. But I think there's enough, enough issues, including just the general layout, you know, like the sea cul-de-sac and what that goes to everything. I think you're probably gonna have to revise the plan some, decide what you want to do.
So the cul-de-sac lengths, if we add this cul-de-sac as suggested, we'll have two cul-de-sac variances. Those could be granted by planning commission.
Correct.
The setback side yard would go to BZA.
Yes.
The six-acre box is determined by the planning commission.
But to get around it, I guess, is a BZA issue.
So the commission can make a determination of how you want to set, if you will, the acre, the 207 by 207, and how you measure that. Do you want to do it based on the lot, the building envelope, or otherwise? I'd pick one of those two and then be consistent with it, not rotating it around and all that jazz. You start at one point, you start laying it out using one of those standards. And then if you can't achieve it, then you go to the BZA for a variance on that. They can grant an exception to the code.
So our options, again, you're saying lot, building envelope, did you say a third?
Well, relative term, I think he said, well, what else we wanted?
Or something else.
I think it's, I don't think it's.
Yeah, so if a portion of a building envelope falls within the one-acre determination, do you include that? Is it, is it, is it more than 50%? You know, some standard, give them a standard and they'll apply, you know?
Is it, is it, you know, the portion of it, the total, you know, you got three full and you've got three halves, or six halves, you know, whatever, you know, do you base it on something like that?
Falls within that. Because, I mean, I think you're always gonna, you're gonna run into that situation no matter what. You always have potentially eight, you may have, like, in that instance up there, like you showed, you have like three halves, so, or three quarters or whatever.
Yeah, what was it? Was it four and then four partials? Four fulls and four partials in that?
And now exactly.
One.
But if you moved it down to be in the house area, then you had four, then four.
Yeah, almost the entire.
Roughly, let's just say it's a quarter. Let's say just for, it's 25%. Currently, if you moved it down and just did the building envelope, it's 50 or 60%, something like that. So, yeah, the question is what, what's acceptable.
So would it be a good start for us to portion that? Just take half, if it's half? Take a true, make it true math, at least for starters from our point of view?
I mean, I think you need some direction from these guys.
Yeah, that's not what you were looking at. You were looking at if any, if it's hidden, right? Not necessarily 50% of it.
If the building envelope is within the acre, there's a house in that building.
Yeah.
Whether, whether the house touches the edge of that or not, it's a house in that bill, in that acre, because it's within that building envelope. But there has to be some.
That, to me, considers it's, it's a building, it's a developable area at that point. It's touching it. That's where it touches it.
Yeah.
It should be.
I think the way Brian showed it, though, and like his example was all of them were touching it, more than, it wasn't just like a sliver. So if it was a sliver, I think that'd be a different discussion. That's where you could take and possibly just move the house back or make the lot a little bit deeper. And at that point, wouldn't fall into it. But I think in that example, every single one of those areas had at least a quarter or more of a house where it was, where you were trying to question again.
Kevin.
And I understand the only two things we can, we can have any decision on, maybe tonight, is the setback and the cul-de-sac. Is that, is that about it?
That's about it.
So the rest of it all has to go BZA?
Any action?
Maybe.
I don't think we'll probably, and I think we probably wouldn't take any action on it.
On any of the?
On any of it, but kind of give them, you know, give them some direction on those and put it all together. But I think.
We can, we can approve these two things according to, Kevin.
We, I think we could.
Vary it, yeah. The rest of it has to go to the BZA.
The rest of it has to go to BZA. And I think it might be better to really, you know, give them, give them maybe our feeling on those two. Like, personally, I think, I think the cul-de-sac, as Brian's recommending, and I don't know, it didn't sound like anybody had a problem with the 25-foot setback.
I don't.
Yeah. So I think you probably count on those two things. Everything else, I think, you know, probably has to either be changed or go to the BZA. The only other thing I think we could offer them is to, is some more guidance on, on this units per acre.
But how about the egress-ingress on Valley View Road? Is that, what are your, what's our feeling on that?
Yeah, I think that's, well, that's, I guess that, that's the cul-de-sac issue I was about to be talking about. I guess there's two cul-de-sac issues. There's the 600-foot.
Right.
Which, you know, unless, unless Fire has an issue with it, so Mr. France is okay with it, I'd be okay with that 600-foot. So I don't think that's gonna be an issue. So I think, yeah, so that, the length and then cul-de-sacking off the one street to have only the one access out of Twinsburg.
Instead of requiring them to go off of Eileen Drive.
Opposite of Eileen, yeah.
Well, you were willing to waive that one, too. I would. The old road that we saw prior was straight down from Valley View, like most of the subdivisions up and down Valley View. They don't require crap, traffic signs, I mean, traffic lights that I saw.
Right. Well, I think, I think what the, Brian's recommendation was to not have the access on Valley View.
I, I know that.
Okay.
I don't know what the point of that is.
Because it's too close to the intersection?
Well.
It's sitting, it's at 300 and.
What was your feeling?
340 feet, and it's required to be 600.
My feeling is this committee approved it before, but now you're taking back that approval.
Well, that was, that was your only access at that time, though?
It was.
I think that the fact that you've got the opportunity to go out on another road, we shouldn't allow you to have a road that violates what we're saying here in the code. So if that was your only access.
Well, how did we, how did we approve it the last time?
It was his only access. It was his only access.
It was the only way to get in there.
Yes. He didn't have access out to, to 20th Road at the time.
All right, I follow what you're saying.
Okay. But in terms of trying to give you some guidance, I think you probably start it at a lot line and then somebody, you know, so it's not just building envelopes, but if you've got the other ones across the street, if we're starting to hit the buildings, I think that's, should be counted as, as a lot.
It seems to us, I think, that if it falls, if 10-foot of the house is touching, that it should have maybe, there should be some calculation on that, because that's not a whole, I mean, otherwise, when you lay them all out, they wouldn't.
You, you could potentially lay out that acre box somewhere and calculate 100 units.
But it's developable. But it's developable, so it says it's a developable area. So if you're putting something within that box, you're developing within that box.
You're developing a ten-foot section.
A little corner.
Then move the house back. Move the houses back further.
Again, the precedence in the PUD in Macedonia is not to do that.
I'm going off of what the code says right now in front of me.
Yeah, and I just, I, you know, we're in, this will, we'll have to be just figure it out at a later date, but like, why in every other community, including two of them that I built it in, and maybe the one is a senior development? But, and I don't know what the code is on that, but that, it wasn't the precedence, so that's...
I can't answer what other committees do.
I can't rule on it before, and I'm just going by what I see in the code and what Mr. Frans wrote out for us to look at and go back and look at the code, so...
But I guess from your standpoint, that acre could be, is subjective to this committee's. The committee can make a recommendation that, okay, ten percent of the house is ten percent of the house.
We can't rule on this anyway, though, right?
Well, you have to give us direction.
We need some direction.
I think we just did, and you're disputing our...
We're just gonna hear from the whole committee, though.
Well, I see the point. If you have all these others, somehow you'd have to look at the minutes and see how these others get approved if it's in violation of our code. I don't follow that at all. How would they ever get approved within strict violation of the code?
I don't know. I wasn't there.
We don't have the minutes. They could've gotten variances.
So they have to look at the minutes and see, well, how did this happen?
Well, they're not asking us for a recommendation on that. They're asking us for a recommendation on what, how to start promoting this, and I gave a recommendation.
Well, I don't think we can rule on that. It's not our provision. We have to go to the variance and show them this. And that you approved all these, we need a variance. I think that's the most, if we can't approve it and we don't...
Well, I think we gave you, I think we gave you some direction. I mean, if you wanna propose something different, you're more than welcome to. It sounds like Tony doesn't wanna give it to Chris. Do you have any opinion?
Yeah, I guess I would just wanna find out more about, like, you know, it's gotta be public record. Why, you know, because I was looking at Valley Creek Estates and, you know, there are, by the letter of that, you know, what we're analyzing, there are squares that have, you know, eight units touching, so I would just, yeah, I would like to know how we arrived at, how that was arrived at. I realize this was a long time ago, but it's public record.
Yeah, I went through a whole subdivision and did squares, and there's, you know, subdivision after subdivision after subdivision. There's actually none that don't, that comply to the code. I guess that's fair. You're saying it doesn't matter.
I'm not saying it doesn't matter. You just asked us for direction. I gave you direction. You're arguing my direction, so...
Well, I'm just arguing how we could maybe make this work to comply to past precedents. That's what I'm trying to do.
I don't know how they did it.
That's what I'm trying to do.
If you could show us how they measured it in past precedents, we'll look at that.
I don't know. The code doesn't say, so...
But you just said you measured these out, and so you measured them somehow.
Well, I did that square. We did the square, and anywhere it was touching within that square.
Yeah, but in fairness, the one example, the Villas de Teramina, is not a fair example, right? So at least one on your list, I quickly just, it's wrong. Your list is wrong from that one right there, period. It's eleven sixty-three oh six E one. The maximum density shall be twelve units per acre. So you can take that off your list. That's how they got approved on that one. So now the other ones, who knows? I think it's fair to look at those to see, was some interpretation... I don't honestly remember, Chris, I don't. But I remember doing this exercise and going through with the square, how we landed on things, we should look and see, in fairness to you. But that one right there, that one, you know, just for the record, that's how that was, twelve units per acre.
Could I ask the committee's approval for me to work with Brian to come up with the square measurement and figure out, or Joe, or...
I would suggest you do that. We do, because you do have a pretty good argument for, you know, we're high bound by the code, apparently, and if you can't get through the code, you gotta go to the variance. But I think it's a good idea to try to work with them on that. Maybe there's a way.
Would you be willing to?
Well, certainly I am. I just, I don't know what the, like, to me, the commission, it's, at the end of the day, the commission will say whether or not they agree. I mean, I could stand up here and argue all day long, and sometimes I have, and they disagreed with me and moved on. It's okay. But I think to have some direction, and Mr. Cox, I would just say that this is something within your purview, is to provide some direction of how we use the one-acre square. Is it the lot line? Is it the building unit line? If it's the building unit line and the house touches in it, is there an acceptable threshold of the house touching in? If it's more than fifty percent, is it counted? If it's more than twenty-five percent? I think that's what you're looking for, is that direction.
Yeah, I don't even know if, my, you know, quick looking at this one would be that if it touches it, it should just be a percentage of how much it touches, so, and then that should be subtracted amongst the other lots. That's how I would view it, but...
Or another way to do it is just to draw a box around any six lots and calculate the area.
And what if a unit falls, what if a building unit or footprint falls within that?
Well, it won't, because you're just, we're just gonna be on the proposed lot lines.
He's saying work the math in reverse.
Yeah, forget the box, because you could, everyone knows, you can take that box and rotate it. If you didn't like the project, you could rotate it, make it that way.
But in this example, I like Chris, and I didn't do that.
I understand, no.
And in the example that we looked at, it does have that portion, what are, let's say it's twenty percent. That twenty percent of the building envelope falls within the acreage, the one acre, so we could do what you're suggesting, but it's still gonna, we're still gonna be back to what's acceptable to the commission, in my opinion.
And I think we're proving a point. It's not written very well, because we have four people, it seems here, that have different opinions. And that's not good, and it's, you know, what are we supposed to do from this side of the table? And I think, I think we need to look at the, but we have three different, maybe, direction opinions, right? From, we have different voting person, people here. But, and here's my point, though, is the PUD, we all know, was, it was put together to allow the developer to put in less infrastructure with the same amount of lot lots as the underlying district, right? It's also good for the city. There's less sanitary sewer pavement to maintain, whatever, right? But I think the, I think we, sometimes you have to look at the point, why was this maximum box acres put together? I mean, what's the intent of it? We're tripling the minimum amount of open space that is required in a PUD. We're under the density that's gonna be allowed. We've already agreed to that. I think it's a point that we're arguing that really, at the end of the day, doesn't matter much.
To me, I would think that the intention was to decrease the density. You're still gonna have much open space, but don't cram it so tight that you've got just people living on top of each other. You know, tighten it up, but not too tight.
That's probably the case. I think without saying the word, it's density and concentration is really what it's probably trying to get at.
I get that, but I mean, if you look at the R1 district that we're in, our rear yard setback is five feet. So you could be ten feet from someone's rear porch.
There's no other community where you'd be five foot rear setback. You'd build a house five foot from your own. So if the intent of the code was to give separation, that would be the first place you'd look.
And maybe that's not a great thing, but it's what's in the code. But it is here.
I, I guess what I'd be asking for is we could get some guidance, I mean, again, it seems like all, well...
I don't think we've had four different opinions, like you said. I think Mr...
Moving along.
All these people are waiting.
I think they want to answer.
Yeah, I'd like to plug in. But I'd be willing to also be willing to work with, you know, a couple of your, you have an engineer and a city planner and...
And you're certainly welcome to do that, yeah. I mean, we're, even if we give you guidance, if you came back with something and they thought it was reasonable, we thought it was reasonable, okay, it's different than what we told you today, as long as it seemed reasonable, we'd be open to looking at it. I think we're not super close-minded, but I don't, do you have any difference of opinion, Tony, in what we've, in what we've thrown out?
No, I think we oughta continue this and let him continue to work on it, and I don't know what we can rule on today at all.
Well, the only thing that we could do is we could give him some guidance on how to measure, is I think all he's asking for. And I think, Scott, I think, I think we're on the same page right now. I don't know. Chris, did you have a difference of opinion?
The only other thing I'm concerned about is if we make that interpretation where essentially it is gonna become a precedent and we're gonna have to stick that going forward, so is that something, we've gotta be, we gotta like it.
We'd have to, essentially, what we'd have to do is how do we measure this and how do we come up with it?
Yeah.
That's fine, that's fair. Unless, unless it's already been done. If there's something that's already been done, if that's how these other ones, if that's how they got it done and there was a way that they went and measured it, then I'm open to hearing that and doing that.
And the only other thing I'm thinking of...
Thanks, guys.
The only other thing on Valley Creek Estates that I know, because I lived there and I'm on the HOA, is that that was like a, those duplexes originally.
Yeah.
And I don't even know if the zoning was the same or, you know, so just like starting to like think of that history. I don't know. I think we either need to research these other projects a little deeper to be able to come up with that interpretation before we just sort of land on something that is gonna set it for years to come.
Well, I guess it comes down to you then, like, do you want an answer tonight from us as to how to do this? Or do you want us to go back and research this and figure out how this might have been done and then give you an answer, I guess? Because that seems like you want an answer, but the answer...
I would be willing to wait for an answer.
Okay.
And how these other developments got to that point.
Then, yeah, let us do some research.
Don't you know how they were done? Some of those are yours.
Well, it sounds like the Villas de Teramina was in a senior, and I was not the developer I worked with.
How about Spruce Hill?
Spruce Hill, it was approved, and I know that it was approved when I bought the property.
Well, we could see how that researched, how that was done. How did they get around all this? I don't know.
I guess my only thought, my only question back to you would be...
Northwest, I was on the planning commission at that point.
If you do have, like, a portion of that house sitting in that area, why not just push it back and then you fall in compliance? It's kind of what we came up with. I mean, you're only talking, like, it's only ten percent, and you're only pushing it back ten percent to comply then.
Yeah, then you lose a whole bank of lots, and then the side yard setback is the other, you know, issue. That is not, I mean, that's probably more of an issue than the six units per acre. I mean, you're going from twenty foot on a residential to thirty foot on a PUD, which usually is in reverse. And precedence has shown it's in reverse, but that's where we would do some, we can do some research.
Okay.
But there's a lot of documentation that has to be pulled, years and years of it.
Why are you looking at me, Chris?
You're busy, Susan.
I need a list of the subdivision you want me to look in. Records request.
Okay.
So I guess at this point, I'll make a motion to continue this to whatever, at the May.
Right.
June might be a little quick, continue to the July meeting. I don't think realistically, because we're talking, what? A little over a week or something before the submittal deadlines? Friday? Okay, a little less than a week. So continue this to the July meeting. Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Now, just for the record, can we ask questions to Brian if we have any?
Yeah, I don't know. Is it formally, should it go through?
It's really hard to...
I can answer your Spruce Hill. They went and got a variance. I was looking at my old memo.
So I...
They got a variance, number of units, and they give a nature. That's what it looks like.
Yeah.
That's probably the explanation for all of them.
It's a good chance, yeah.
It might be, but I didn't...
It was, I don't think it was you.
It was not me.
Yeah.
It was James Vitale.
Yes.
I know there was litigation involved, but I don't know anything about...
Yeah, I don't know. I'm familiar with that, but I'm just looking at my February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one memo. And it, this issue, this exact issue is in my memo, bold, underlined.
Okay.
And so, and suggested they go, need to go for a variance, and it was James, and he did go for a variance. So he must've got it.
Okay.
And that, that's what, that's how that got.
And that could be something, we can explore that, too, but I definitely wanna look into some of the other ones.
Yeah, for sure.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So if I, you tabled it up?
Yes.
Continue it?
Continue it.
Did, is there, I just, for my own sake, final direction on the cul-de-sac versus the...
We're going back to do some research to figure out what just happened because he wants us to...
No, but relative to, I had recommended a cul-de-sac rather than a through street.
We're open with that.
Yeah, I think we're cul-de-sac, so it's only one access, probably be okay with the six-hundred foot, be okay with its twenty-five-foot front yard setback.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks.
All right, thanks. All right, we're all the way to item number two. Woo-hoo! Signage for prime four. Could've gotten this.
Could've ran dinner for everybody.
Good evening.
Hello.
Promise this will be easier. So this is wall signage, pretty straightforward. What is prime four, do you know? You don't know, you're just making the sign.
Number four is an IV.
It's an hydration.
Probably.
Yeah, okay.
It's gonna be, well, it's gonna be standard channels on your side, LED illuminated on a raceway that matches the brick on the building.
Okay.
To minimize the number of holes we have to put through the wall, of course. And then two panels for the directory side. Two replacement panels.
Okay. Ms. Frans, do you wanna go over here and comment?
Yeah, I will. Do you happen to know the tenant furniture? That's really a big issue.
It should be on this artwork.
See, I didn't see it. I, off of, off of the aerial, I generally got to about twenty feet, which gives you about forty square feet of signage. And even if we include the incidental portion, the incidental portion of the letter that extends above the other letters, you're still at only twenty, or twenty-one square feet. But if you can confirm the tenant frontage, that's, yeah, I think it's twenty feet, based on aerial photograph.
Okay.
I interpreted it off an aerial, but typically, so when you apply in the future for requests, you always wanna identify your tenant frontage, because that's, whatever it is, fifty feet, a hundred feet, it's times two, and that gives you your square footage.
Well, we usually do that. If we're, if this is our customer, it just so happens that this is another sign company that subcontracted us to get the permits and do the installation. And most of the time, they do that.
Yeah.
You know?
If the commission, though, that's really the only issue area, why the sign's fine. Just, you know, I would recommend you make a provision subject to at least having... They would at least need to have eleven feet of frontage, which we know they do, but just to...
Just a document. All right, do we have any questions, or?
Well, I think we maybe approve, subject to administrative approval, if somebody can come up with the square.
The frontage.
That's what we usually do.
So is that a motion?
Well, it's...
That sounded like approval and a motion.
Okay, make a motion to approve subject to confirmation by the applicant of the tenant frontage. So if someone can...
Right, we'll go back to our survey that we sent to them.
Okay.
And then we'll show the dimensions and email it in, if that's okay.
That should be fine, yeah. Somebody'll, you know, as long as they're satisfied with that, they'll, if it's more than eleven feet, or at least eleven feet, which I'm sure, again, it is, yeah, they'll give you your permit, so...
Kind of reminds me of our...
I do remember that.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Number three, Sign Vision Company proposing signage for Summit Corners. Hello. Could you get your name?
Yes, Kathy Clark, Ace Lighting. So basically, it's a rebrand of the cabinet sign. And I think the only issue was the height of the brick base, which on the survey is about three point seven foot tall.
I think, well, Ms. Frans, feel free to go through your comments, but I think it was... I think, well, Ms. Franz, feel free to go through your comments. I think it was the, it was the total, was it the total height?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, so similar to the last one, there's, there's no issue with the area being 30 square feet. The code allows it to 40 for a freestanding sign. This one is, what's the height? Provided that it's eight feet or less, it can be approved and submitted. The reason that's important is because, I don't remember when, when the last one was done, but the code changed a few years back, and height of the minimum or maximum height of a freestanding sign went from 10 to eight feet. And so just need to confirm it's eight feet or less.
Yes, it is eight or less. Yes. The brick base is 3.21 feet. And then the sign was what, 4.6?
Yes, 4.6.
Yes, or like, that's seven.
The brick includes a stone?
Yes.
Okay. With a stone fascia.
Provided it's eight, less than eight, eight feet or less, it's acceptable.
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Motion, we approve it.
Good job.
Oh, it's easy.
That's right. It's a learning lesson.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Get an easy one.
I don't think the first, the last one got approved. I don't think they.
Oh, really?
Yeah, wouldn't it change from whatever it was originally to American, whatever it is, American housing? Next is installation of five silos and plastic materials incorporated. Hello. Where are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good. Could you get your name for the?
Jason Richardson, Plastic Materials.
All right. Just want to give us a quick overview of what, what's planned.
Yeah, just looking to pour two pads for five silos.
There's two locations, is that?
Yeah, there's three, a bank of three and a bank of two.
Okay. And what do they store in this?
Black, there's polypropylene regrinds and the.
Okay. All right. Ms. Franz, you want to go over the comments?
So my report dated April 28th, as the applicant stated, two separate areas. I said I'd see my red circles, but if you have a black and white copy, you're not going to see red. But to the rear of the building and to the, to the west side of the building, two banks, as the applicant identified. So just a couple issues. One, a consolidation plat will need to occur. Your building over separate parcels, so.
Yeah, and I never, I'd love to have one tax bill. So it's kind of weird that it's, it's been like this since we bought the building, and the building is on all three anyways.
Yeah, it's very odd. It's not uncommon, so it's bad, it'll cost you a little money.
Yeah.
But it's better for you in the long run that everything's consolidated on one lot. So that's a, unfortunately, these guys are, it's a good group of planning commissioners, but unfortunately, you do have to come back and see them because they have to approve consolidation.
Okay.
But it's a technical issue and shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
And then with regard to the, the setback, two silos proposed on the north side of the building, the other three are on the west side of the building. The proposed side yard setback for the westerly located silos, 18 feet, section 116903F2A permits a zero setback, side and rear, when adjacent to a railroad right of way, which is the case with this proposal. So I felt that it was acceptable, given that the code allows that. 116903G, and this is a question for you. So the code establishes a height limitation of 35 feet for the main building. However, limitation does not apply to appurtenances necessary for the primary business activity and erected as an integral part of the building. So the silos sit at 38 feet, higher than the main building, which is okay, provided they are erected as an integral part of the building. So as stated in my memo, I can't tell, but if they're standalone silos and not attached or abutting to, directly to the building.
I mean, they sit next to it, but they're not attached physically, other than piping.
Could they be side and attached?
I mean, how do you, what do you perceive?
Is it piping?
The piping goes.
Yeah, I mean, if the foundation are attached to it.
Foundation's right next to it, yeah.
That's fair. Otherwise, you have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals because you, you're limited to 35 feet.
Part of the building, though, that's existing is 55 feet tall. And there's another silo that's 55 and a half feet tall. I mean, this building is chopped up.
Yeah, I see that.
All different kinds of heights.
Yeah, so if you, and I guess that's good too, if, if there's, if there's a portion of the building that exceeds the 35 feet.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. This part here is 55 feet. This section back here.
Yeah, so I would say, I don't know how that got approved, but.
It wasn't up.
Yeah, but I would, I would call it for just for the sake of discussion, a legal non-conforming issue on the property.
Yeah.
As long as they don't exceed that legal non-conformity or increase it, it's acceptable. And so this being 38 feet is below 55, if they're not exceeding the non-conformity, I think that's probably acceptable.
Okay.
It's a long way to say, I think it sounds like it'd be okay to approve it. And just identify it as a non-conforming situation, and they're not increasing the non-conformity.
Okay.
And then the code does require screening, but I really, so I articulated in a very nice handwritten little note here on aerial, you can't see it, like, because it's, the road sits up so much higher, the building's down low, screening is irrelevant. And I think the commission can waive that standard, given that circumstance.
Isn't that going to bring in 38-foot trees?
Well, you'd need a little more than 38, so.
At least that.
Forty.
Oh, they grow.
Yeah. I think it's something reasonable, Chris.
Okay.
Given the site department, everybody will need to.
I did, I don't know if it would help, but I did have our attorney draw up with things saying that we're good with going through with consolidating the lots. If that, if you give us 45 days, if we could proceed with at least the concrete portion of the, of the port, if that would help at all, I don't know. But if I need to come back for that or?
Yeah, you, you have that documented?
I do.
Yeah, just to mention to record, I, I will tell you that's better than 99.999% of all of the applicants that may have.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, so I'd approve it, subject to the admission of that into the record.
Okay.
Kevin, I got one question.
Yeah.
I guess it's based on that. Why, if the owner, the owner owns all three parcels, what, why do we have, why would you have to have it consolidated if they own all three parcels? What legal difference does the planning commission care? I, I mean, I know they're going to do that and all that, but it's an expense. The track means unnecessary.
Yeah, so there's an academic discussion that I could have for about 40 minutes. I think these people.
Please, please don't.
Yeah, the quick answer is, it, it really is down to how you define uses, principal uses or accessory uses. And you can't have portion, portions of the principal use spread over multiple parcels, whether it's one owner or not. Because they could try to sell a portion of, they could sell one lot to someone else, and now I have a lot that has separate and distinct ownership from the other two.
Oh, okay.
So you always want to, and this is not uncommon. Again, these things could take back decades of how they just came about. And so when we see them, we just catch them and consolidate them. And this gentleman recognizes that it's important and is not arguing it. So I would say accept it into the record if the commission's okay with it and make it a stipulation.
No, they're going to do it. It's a logistic question.
I use less words on that.
Mr. Ross, you anything?
I have nothing, Chairman.
No, no. All right. So I guess with this, yeah, with this letter, you guys okay with this? Anybody have any questions? Mm-hmm. I'm good. So I guess the things we'll have, yeah, this isn't the motion yet, but yes, we can approve it, subject to the letter submitted this evening, saying your intention to consolidate parcels, as well as recognizing the non-conforming situation where, and of the building height, and these will not exceed that non-conforming situation of 55 feet. Is there anything else, Mr. Franz, that needs to be specifically mentioned?
And you're accepting a zero, you're accepting the 18-foot setback because 116903F2A permits a zero setback when adjacent to a rail, railroad right of way. I believe I heard you said that. And then you also referenced that additional landscape is not necessary, given the topography of the site is such that the road sits much higher, and you would need unnecessarily large landscaping to be brought in.
There's actually some there anyways, from the bridge.
You're never going to block those silos.
So with all this, I guess, but yes.
I just have a question. So you will be applying for a concrete permit, I assume, because you want to.
Correct. So that, is that separate from this then?
Well, no. I mean, if they approve it, we could issue that.
Okay.
But we would also issue the permit for the construction of the silo.
Okay.
Or at the same time, or?
The same time would be great, yeah. They're existing, they just need to stop with the crane.
Probably based on you kind of consolidating the lots, right?
Okay, yes. Yep, yep.
So I guess I would move to make that motion, if you caught all that, Susan, or do we need to go over?
I think I caught a lot of it, yeah.
A lot of it. I guess, so you, you'll check back with it at the video? Is that?
Yeah.
How you usually do it? Okay.
Yeah, I got.
So does anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? I don't know what that letter says, but.
I have one.
How does it, how does it read with respect to the 45 days? Okay, so, so that's good. It says basically, they need 45 days to complete it and then submit the request. So it doesn't say, within 45 days, we'll complete the process, because that, that wouldn't be reasonable.
Okay.
This is good.
All right, you have to. All right, so we've got a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is that the building permit part of it? Is that just two, or is that a whole nother section?
You would contact the building department for that.
Okay, now contact them about the.
Some drawings, construction drawings.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Next up is Seven Brew. Come on down. Thank you. All right, all right, you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, could you get your names for the record?
Jean Bolzmo, Carboni Transportation.
Matthew Waymoth with Seven Brew.
All right. So I guess, I'm, first thing I wanted to ask is, what are you actually here for tonight? Is it the site plan? Is it lot split? I was, wasn't sure.
We're for both.
For both?
Correct. Correct.
I don't think.
No, not for last one.
Not for last one, this is just.
Sorry. Not for last one, last split after. Correct.
Okay, so this is just the, this is just the site plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
That's, that's fine. So I guess the, the plan hasn't, has the plan changed much since the last time you guys brought it in, or?
Yeah, we've made some adjustments to, to the plan.
Okay, I guess maybe if you guys, you got a presentation?
We do. Yes, sir.
All right, then I'll let you go for it.
I'm going to step back and then come up when we need it, but we have traffic, we're a whole team's here, traffic.
Okay. Let you guys.
Yeah, I have a traffic presentation. I don't know if you have the first.
My name's Dean Yorichin on the applicant.
Okay.
We can cover the, we can cover the site stuff first and go down through the comments, the concerns that the commission had, and we can address the architectural. I think the architectural is probably going to go pretty quick because we're, you know, we're just going to make the revisions. But I think, I think site's probably the most important aspect.
Okay. I don't know if it's best, Mr. Franz, if you wanted to go through your site comments and then, I mean, I'm not sure how you want to.
Well, she's got a presentation if you want.
Do that first?
Do that and see what, see what that possibly answers, and then we go from there.
And I, though we, I don't know if we have a way to show it, or if we just, I could pull it up on my computer.
I watched it earlier.
I watched it. The two videos we're talking about? There's the videos, there was a, there was a. Well, yeah. I, I don't think they've got it set up for you.
Okay, yeah, I brought the laptop too.
I'm probably going to do this, probably sit right there and talk to it. Like, it's up to you. Do you want to use yours? Do you want to?
Yeah, your screen's bigger.
Okay. You're just going to open the PowerPoint that was emailed out? Yes. Okay. I'm going to pull it up on my, I'll follow along. Let's see, I'll just maybe sit it on that shelf there. I'm not sure if we have the mouse. If you guys, yeah, you may have it on your computer as well.
Okay. He almost got it. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Stop thinking back.
Yeah. Okay, and this is all the same as what you have. And it kind of summarizes what we had in the traffic impact study as well. But basically, what you have out there, your problem is a PMP hour issue, right? You don't have a traffic problem, per se, during the morning rush hour or during the AMP. And, you know, Colby Places, Seven Brew, our heaviest peak hour time is the AMP hour. So we're adding 44 trips during the AMP compared to only 15 trips during the PMP. And the calculated northbound left turn lane length, coming out of that drive there, is 225 feet during the PMP hour, but only 100 feet during the AMP hour, which is what most of our traffic is again. And both of those lengths are inclusive of two-foot paper. So really, the existing storage that's needed is just 175. And that's, again, in the PMP hour. So what you have during the AMP hour is just fine, as is. And again, that's when we're adding all of our trips, or most of our trips. And the queuing analysis actually shows that, you know, things are not that bad either. So during the PMP, it's 56 feet for that northbound left and 77 feet for the northbound brew slash right lane. So again, that's a lot shorter than that 225 feet that we're showing based on that ODOT calculated lane. And then we have some pictures drawn up here with the site plan, showing a two-way left turn lane that can be added down here. And that gives you that whole 225 feet of storage that you will need during the PMP, based on the ODOT calculations. But when Seven Brew is, you know, running hot, they're not going to be needing that space. It's really complementary of the different uses on the land. And we're also showing here, you know, we're not just talking about people coming out at the signal over here. There's other options to leave the site as well. And I'm sure patrons will choose to use those other options if things are congested during the PMP hour. So we showed that during the AMP, with just two vehicles is what we're showing, is the 95th percentile queue then, and then three vehicles in that left turn lane during the PMP. So again, operation showing things are going to be okay. We also came up with some other ideas, because I knew there were concerns. So signage can be posted to inform drivers not to block the internal access intersections. And I know you all already have something like that out there right now. A stop sign can be posted for that northbound. A stop sign can be posted for that northbound traffic just south of the Seven Brew drive lane, so you know, somewhere down here. So that way, you're creating those gaps in traffic, so that way you don't have that concern or the situation you're talking about with people backing up onto the state route. Also, Seven Brew, I think is working well, you know, they're providing two different drive-through lanes. So that way, again, you don't have that queuing that you're concerned about. And there's a third lane that's being provided onsite, so that way, if there are queues, there's another option for people to get out of the way. Also, just adding to all of that, our analysis is really conservative. So we, we assumed a linear annual growth rate of point five percent even though ODOT forecasting showed it's zero percent growth out there. So that was one place we were being conservative. And then also, we did not assume any internal capture with our, with our trips, which basically assumes, you know, let's say you went to Hobby Lobby, and then on your way out, you're like, oh, let's get some Seven Brew, that sounds like a good idea. We didn't assume any of that, so we're assuming all the trips coming to Seven Brew are there for Seven Brew, not people who are already in that shopping center. And then we provided the traffic video simulations. I don't know, I don't know if that's gonna be helpful for me to show that right now, I don't think many people will be able to see that. But you said you viewed it.
I, I viewed it, yeah.
And it really shows.
The AM and the PM?
Yeah, AM and PM, and that's also in the horizon here. So, you know, in the future, with the added growth that we're assuming, and it shows, everything should work out fine. In that slide deck, we also included, you know, how I said, this site is really complementary to the other land uses you have out there just because all the other land uses are open later in the day, are peaking in their traffic later in the day. That's why we say it's a PMP issue, not an AMP issue. So really, all we're overlapping with is, I think, the yoga studio. And then adding to that even further, the blue graph here shows a typical Seven Brew sales, you know, so again, peaking in the morning hours, and then compared to the traffic that we have exiting out of that signal is peaking during the PMP. Again, showing how they complement each other. And then the site guys came in and showed a whole bunch of different aerials throughout the year. Obviously, you don't know what time these are, but just showing, you know, the site is pretty open throughout the years. Whenever you look at aerials, we're not seeing a ton of queues. I know you've probably experienced it yourself during the PMP hour, I understand that. But in the realm of, you know, developments that could come to this site, this is really the best-case scenario just because it is so complementary to the other businesses in the area. If you had another fast food restaurant or something, then you would be peaking during the PMP along with the other sites out there.
Can I add something to that as well? Our, our business model is, is set up for all of our site selection that we go after sites that already have traffic. We look for other drivers similar to the shopping center to bring cars to us. We're not looking to attract outside cars and bring them in, we're looking to feed off the, the original traffic that's there. That's our, you know, our business model for every site that we go after, we can like that, and it's the case here as well. That's why we chose this.
All right. I guess, let you guys, if you want to, have any comments you've got on this. I've got some thoughts, but. I guess, do you want to, Franz, do you want to do your comments that related to this part of it? Instead of just going straight through, since we're kind of.
Keep it to traffic?
Keep it to the traffic and the access. Now, I know you've got it.
Yeah. So, if we're not talking about the lot split at all tonight, then that's, I'll just forego any of those.
Yeah, I would say, yeah.
We'll assume that'll be addressed at a later time. So I just had a couple comments just about from your presentation, if I can ask. So regarding signage that would limit blocking the driveway, so an internal sign that says, be nice, who enforces that? It's not the Macedonia Police, so I'm just curious who enforces that?
And who follows it?
Well, that's a different.
Well, that's the problem, there's a sign there now, nobody follows it.
Yeah. And the point is internally, it can't be enforced by the local jurisdiction, it's on private property, so it's.
We do have staff that, it's, think of like Chick-fil-A, for example, where there are people outside in the, in the queuing lanes taking orders and directing, and directing traffic. And we really try to build a, our relationship with, with our customers. So we're letting them know, as ninety-four percent of our customers become loyalty customers, that we let them know, you know, here's, here's our preferred method for, for you to exit order. We do, we do try to do that on-site on-site and control that from that perspective, as much as we can.
Yeah, another thing to add to, we could put pavement markings out there too, like hatching, to like, just further visualize, yeah, we're saying you can't stop here with a sign, and that's been there, and like you say, I don't know if people comply with it, but maybe pavement markings will add to that compliance.
Okay. And then, on your peak hour generator, it looks like it's like nine AM. And I thought I heard someone say that you rely on most of your business would be not coming from off-site, but rather than from the, the businesses that are already there onsite. And nine AM's your, which is your peak hour, and I don't think, most of those aren't even open at nine AM. So it seems to me you're relying from off-site traffic. And my, my question is, as it relates to the south side of the road with traffic coming off the freeway, because I know getting off in the morning there, getting off of two seventy-one on eighty-two, it's always very busy and a lot of right turn movements. Why the south side of the road versus the north side of the road when your peak hour is in the morning? Seems to me you'd want to be on the north side of eighty-two to capture that AM peak hour, but I'm just, I'm just asking more out of curiosity.
Perfect. To answer your first question, it's, it's from a marketing standpoint, right? So a lot of people use that shopping center throughout the day, and most of them are loyalty customers. They will learn that, that, that we are, yes, they're not there in the morning, but there are plenty of trips generated throughout the day that people will learn that we're there, and then will become part of their, their, you know, ritual in the morning.
So it is more traffic bringing in at the AMP hour, whether they're customers to the, you know, whatever store, they're loyalty customers that weren't coming at nine AM previously, we're gonna bring them in now at nine AM. So that's gonna increase your traffic at the peak hour.
But the AM is not the concern here, the PMP, the PMP traffic is the concern, to my understanding.
Yeah.
I mean, it feels like it's all of it, but.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Especially when you said we need multiple points to exit. Exiting back out on the Commons Boulevard in the morning, that's not gonna happen, especially somebody trying to take a left-hand turn if they're going back to eighty-two, it's always backed up there that early in the morning with traffic.
So those are just questions I had just from the presentation. I still, in my mind, and I'm not questioning your business model, but it seems to me you're gonna pull traffic off of the, off freeway, people making right-turning movements off of the freeway. Why you wouldn't want to be on the north side of the road with a quick right-turning movement in as opposed to going down, turning left to come into the site, but that's just.
Our business is not, is not built for highway traffic and play, it's for the local community. Granted, there will be, that'll happen from time to time, but we are not, our competitors, we are more of a product of, of the community, let's be a part of the community, so we, we don't go for, for the highway plays, we will go for the local community aspects.
Okay.
So a lot of the trips will just be pass-by trips? I think they're split about fifty-fifty, pass-by versus non-pass-by.
So in my, my report, April seventh, item three speaks to the parking space requirement. Sheet C two-one states eleven parking spaces are provided, but only six, five standard, one ADA are provided on the, on the proposed parcel. So additional parking spaces are provided outside of the Seven Brew parcel. And I, I felt if we eliminate the parcel lines, it wouldn't be an issue. And so I keep coming back to, why is it so important to have your own parcel as opposed to not having a parcel, which would eliminate a lot of, it's not gonna eliminate traffic issue, but it eliminates other things that still are, in my mind, of concern.
We're not, we're not parceling this often anymore, it's a Bayley's premise.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not pursuing the lot split at this point.
Oh, well, then, let me rewind on that issue. I didn't know that, James Hope.
We're still working, trying to get some other law director put this point, we're not, we don't need it necessarily, we'd like to do it. We can come back and ask if there's clarification on some of that before we know what.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really, I really believe that the parcelization of this property presents a lot of problems. So with that said, then, you know, we'll get down to, you know, the minor issue of traffic. But all of those issues I noted in my report then become moot if you're telling us tonight.
We're working on that.
It's a lease, okay, good. So then it just gets down to, again, the stacking at the, at eighty-two and queuing there and how that works. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer, I rely on the city engineer for that, would defer to him as it relates to that issue. And then my other comments, we can talk about later more architecture, but it sounds like architecture is not an issue either. So there's probably some new news there as it relates to the cooler and the garbage dumpster and all that, how we can make that work better within the requirements.
Mr. Yehud.
Yeah.
Comments considering?
I can speak for a moment. Chairman, if you could please, maybe you share these with the table. The first one is a drawing you've seen before from a previous meeting, that's the traffic I observed at lunchtime on the date. They're shown, it's a Saturday. Chairman, here's a second drawing that just came through on Saturday morning from Lance Osborne. And by coincidence, I happened to be in the plaza on Saturday, again, at lunchtime, and you can see the traffic stacking that happened, and it just wasn't a one-time thing. You know, it happens on every cycle of the light, it packs up just about two hundred and twenty-five feet, oddly enough.
Yeah.
All the way to the speed bump in front of the door, in front of Hobby Lobby. And certainly, nobody would ever be able to make a left-hand turn into the Seven Brew drive-through during these situations. It's, I've observed twice, and I know others have as well. So we give, all it takes is one car, he wants to make his left into the drive-through, he can't do it. He's gonna wait for a break, and it's gonna stack up behind him, it's gonna block the intersection behind him. Could eventually stack onto Route eighty-two. And as much as I rack my brain to try to find a solution, I don't really have a good solution. And the one thing that I definitely want to do is, I don't want to allow us to move forward and we create a traffic problem that we think is gonna happen, and it's irreversible. Coffee shop goes up, that's it, we can't take it back. So, and I know you, you outlined some things that you think might help. This just came in this afternoon, so I haven't looked at it, and, and it's a little bit unfair to the committee to make the submittal on the afternoon of the meeting, so we don't have a chance really to review it. But with all that being said, I can't recommend to these five people that they vote yes tonight, knowing, knowing what could happen, and the community would suffer, so. That's my input, Chairman.
Thank you.
And I got the, the photos on my phone, if anybody needs to see them, I'll show those backups.
Oh, I, if I could just speak to that.
Yeah.
You know, I sat there today for, for over an hour, at, I mean, three-thirty and four-thirty before I came here. At, at, at no time would it stack like that. If you wanna look at any intersection or shopping center in the country for a snapshot of time and, and make a case, I'm sure you could do that. That's why we pay for a traffic study to, to do that, and the findings, I feel, support.
Quite honestly, they don't. They don't support what I've seen with my own eyes, and, and I know others have seen it too. And, but now, I'm not attacking your study. You know, it's, you're PTOE, and, you know, it's, the study is fine, you know, there's, there's nothing technically wrong with the study, but I, I know what I've seen, and I think it's gonna cause a problem for the community. And so I, I can't with a straight face tell these five people to vote yes, and then we have a problem, and then it comes back. And they all look at me. Well, Chairman, you'll have to look at yourself, you're a traffic engineer too. The other four will look at me.
This, the queuing documented here is from a Saturday.
Mm-hmm. You're open on Saturday, right?
Yeah, yeah.
At noon, which is, you know, pretty close to the peak on the graphic you just showed.
Our analysis is all typical weekday traffic. You know, if, if this is something that needs to be further studied in order to pull it forward, we can do that. I think I would also add that the traffic signal itself at the intersection provides you with gaps in traffic, like, is this?
It is interconnected with all the signals on eighty-two, so if you see a gap in traffic, it's part of the interconnect, so we can't adjust the signal at Route eighty-two.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that, it's more that, you know, yes, you'll have a queue here, but it won't last forever, right?
It lasts longer than. Yeah, but it, it, it doesn't, like I say, it only takes one car, and he wants to make his left to go get his coffee, and everybody's out of luck. That's the problem.
And then twenty seconds later, you know, the signal will turn green, those left turners will come out, and then that gentleman will be able to turn in to get his coffee.
We're relying on an awful lot of human behavior, which.
People being nice, yes.
Exactly, we can't rely on that, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna jump in here, because I have some comments that kind of stay within the context of what was just said. So I'm not a traffic engineer, and I'm not an architect, I was nominated as board by the mayor about four years ago because I'm just a citizen, okay? I have a different day job, and I try to look at things the way, what I hope the typical person's gonna look at, so a couple notes. So I agree with, with what was said. I, I watched both seven-minute videos, and it shows a lot of traffic flowing around. Some of that stuff I don't understand, but what I was paying attention to is the cars that queued up in the spot that we're talking about in your simulation, and they don't depict what I've experienced there. So I've had business dealings on a regular basis with one of the businesses in that plaza around the corner from Hobby Lobby, the place that ships out, they don't, they're not there anymore. But I would be there multiple times a week, usually in the afternoons at the time we're talking about. And it's virtually impossible to make a turn. I'm heading eastbound to make a left turn to head north and leave there because of how backed up that is. Nobody follows a sign. I don't think if you paint the concrete, it would make much of a difference either. So I appreciate the traffic study, but it's not what I have observed there. And it just takes a handful of people to start seeing more stuff getting built there. And then you guys have your business open, you're doing fine, but then City Hall, the mayor, everybody else, the city council people, they start getting phone calls from, from their constituents that are questioning, why the heck did this ever get approved in this area? I think you, you're talking about potentially another stop sign northbound, I think that's confusing. Oh, you have a stop sign, but you're facing a green light, what do I do? Do I go? Do I stop? That's confusing. We have pedestrian traffic that's crossing there, I think that can become a safety issue. I know we keep saying that morning's not an issue, but just the fact that there would be an issue for even just any time of any day, whether it's every day or just certain days, is, is something that we need to seriously consider. I was, I was where you were, if you were there till four-thirty, I wanted to be there at four-thirty, I just couldn't get there from, from work. But I did arrive at four-forty-five, and within less than a minute, there are seven cars queued up almost to the Hobby Lobby door. I have pictures and a video over here on my, on my laptop that I took, if you guys want to see it. But that's just one time, and then I, I could only hang out there for ten minutes because then I had to leave to be here for, for the meeting. But that kind of corroborates what I see throughout the day. I'm just, I'm gonna throw this out, because you guys have been in front of us a number of times, and you don't have to answer this, I don't even know if you can answer this, but I would love for you guys to be in our community. I love you mentioned community involvement stuff, I don't want you just to come in here and sell coffee, I want you to be involved in things and all that stuff that goes on in the community. About a thousand feet west is a very vacant parking lot in front of Office Max that experiences virtually none of this traffic problem that we're talking about here. Why not? I know it's a different developer, but why not just consider putting it over there? Maybe that's.
I can speak to that. I'm David Stein, I'm a broker actually, that has worked with Seven Brew.
I can speak to that. I'm David Stein. I'm a broker actually that has worked with Seven Brew, bring them to Macedonia. And that developer did not entertain that wanting to be on that location.
That's a shame, 'cause they don't even paint new stripes on that portion of the parking lot, 'cause it's not even used for anything. And if you look at the satellite view, the traffic wear on the blacktop just shows people just going right through. It's like beautiful traffic for a drive-through coffee spot, right across the street from another competing coffee, uh, restaurant too. So.
Kevin, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, you know, I, I heard the argument back and forth about the traffic. It is well-covered. But your number-one question was number-one here, uh, the setback. You don't like the setback, Brian. I didn't hear any talk about that. And your number-seven, moving the cooler around, are we gonna get to that, or is...
Yeah.
Isn't that a problem?
So it's, it sounds like that, well, actually, that's a great question. So, and it's a great question for a different reason. So I think it's a moot point because they're gonna do a lease and not, not a parcelization. So if they just lease, we don't have setback issues to property lines. That goes away.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that, that goes away. But hidden inside your question is a bigger question than I have, which is you're not relying on visibility and highway access. You're not. You said the, the highway piece isn't important. You're community-based, so you rely on dependency. Community people coming in, they get a flavor of, you know, plenty of tentative Seven Brew. They enjoy it. They come in. So my question is, sixty-four-thousand-dollar question is, why don't we just put you on the frontage elsewhere? Within the Commons, we want, we want the, James and his group to have your business. Let's put you in a better location that we don't have to have this much of a problem with being right there at a traffic signal that stacks poorly. And there, I think we have two other potential locations that were recently discussed with, with James and his group. And move you on to maybe Commons Boulevard and a better traffic flow. And then we can have you in the community, and let's get you moving.
It's still, there still is visibility from, from eighty-two. It does sit down, but there is still visibility. We, we still wanna be viewed by people that are traveling the most, most traffic part of the road.
Yeah.
And then, you know, to move us in, in, internally, we have, uh, this is more to, to James. But we have to review the decoration. I don't know if it's losing parking spots and, and, and other facets of that. But for us at Seven Brew, I'm, I'm not sure we'd be open to moving to, call it the southeast part of, of James's parcel.
I think you'd be shocked if you looked at the traffic data to see the volume that travels on the Macedonia Commons Boulevard.
I think it's like seven thousand.
Between eighty-two and...
It's a major cut-through.
It's a huge cut-through. And if you were over there in front of us...
I mean, I use it all the time.
It's not fully in my power, man, that choice.
Understood. I just think it'd be good, you know, we're talking about an issue that I don't feel, I could be wrong, but I don't feel the, the city's position is gonna change, that that queuing pattern is difficult. Set aside all the traffic forecast analysis, physical eyes on the ground, it's a problem. And so I think the city would like to have you. And certainly in a lease situation, this is a lot easier. Let's put them over at the site where you were planning a dual-tendoned building right over there, and it's a good location.
It's a lot of complications, but, I mean, that's, uh, for a building versus something different like this, but we have to look at that. I, I did a question for the traffic people that, since there's several in the room right now. Going with their proposing with creating the three lanes of traffic down to the two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet. From what I understand now, when you're out there and you get a backup, you could single lane, because people are kinda sitting in the middle of those.
No, they, they, they get over to the left. They, yeah, if you wanna make a right, you can always slip by on the right. So it functions as three lanes currently.
Pretty far back, is it?
Oh, yeah. Uh-huh, yeah. Yeah, they always let you, there's always a way to get out, make that right, yeah. But good question, though.
It seemed like creating this, you could, you know, if you have eight cars stacked up in a lane, you create two, four, four.
Somebody could go over, yeah, no, no. Everyone that's stacked is waiting to make a left.
Mr. Franz, did we ever look at, um, this is a minor point compared to what we're discussing, but if those parking spaces were removed, does that become a problem for the minimum number of spaces? I, I've just noticed, since, since they've been in front of us, I'm, I'm like paying more attention to this area now when I'm through there. And I go through there a lot throughout the week. And I see a lot more cars parked in that area there, not necessarily in front of the Hobby Lobby doorway, but in between that and the bank. I don't know if the Flagstaff new bank is creating all kinds of new traffic there or some, but there's just a lot more cars parked in the area that they're proposing put in this place. And so that's gonna shift that stuff over.
Yeah, man, we looked at the total parking within the Commons not that long ago. And I feel like, my, my memory is that the total parking's acceptable. Now, there's gonna be pockets within areas where you're gonna have more parking than others, but I think the volume overall, I, I do think is probably okay. To, again, to me, and, you know, what do I know? I'm just a city planner, but there's complications. I get it. You have complications with how you section off, let's call it, not parcel off, but section off an area. But you, you have a lot of areas front of Commons Boulevard that it feels like that this use could go. Still have the visibility and get your traffic patterns, community-based, and, but...
I just, I just, I understand where everybody's coming from. Like, my, I guess my last comment to, to the traffic portion would be that what you guys are seeing is a, is a, or what you're calling an issue is an issue as it sits now. We don't feel like we're going to add to this issue. If anything, we're going to help this issue. We're gonna reconfigure some of the, um, you know, some of the drive aisles, some of the, the, the striping, to help people understand how to navigate through the parking lot and out better. People will fill into the Seven Brew, which may reduce the overall stacking in the front as well. We don't add a lot, generate a lot of additional trips to the center, as our traffic study points out. And I just, I'm asking the board not to hold us, um, you know, accountable for issues that are currently there and to refer to the traffic study that shows that we don't, we're not adding to the problem. If anything, maybe helping the issue there.
So I, I, I got some issue with that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know. Go ahead.
If this was public road, this might be a different story. This is private property that the city does not control. This issue has been brought to the property owners multiple times that this area right here is bad. We tried to do something with some do-not-block driveways. There's, there, nothing has worked. This is an issue that occurs every single day. I've been through there, on the way to the meeting last month, when you guys thought you were gonna be here and you moved it out to this month, I swung through there, and it was backed up almost to the Hobby Lobby doors. Yes, you're not, I, I'm not concerned about the additional, how much more traffic you're adding to the road. The, the capacity of eighty-two that the city controls is, is fine. I'm not worried about the fifteen additional cars. It's what goes on right there, where cars will not be able to turn left into your drive, into your drive-thru. They're gonna sit there, queue cars are gonna queue back. It's gonna potentially bleed into eighty-two, or it's gonna double-block now northbound, southbound at that internal intersection. Yes, you guys didn't cause it, but it's, it's a problem that's on-site, that's going to get worse when cars are queued up.
And, and it's the introduction of a new turning maneuver as well, right, Chairman?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's always...
Does make the problem worse.
And, and, you know, restriping it could be done today, but it's still, uh, like Mr. Yeh was saying, the, the cars that wanna turn left are already using that area as a left-turn lane, and you're leaving enough room up to the right. Right turns are going. So it's like that. You strip it as a two-way left turn. Theoretically, somebody wanting to pull into the drive-through lane will get into the two-way left-turn lane and make the left, except it's not gonna be open during certain times. It's gonna be packed during these periods when it's like that. And whether it's a PM-only issue or it's a noon-on-Saturday issue, there's still the fact that one car comes in, it screws it up, and it's, and it's gonna be bad. I've brought this up previous three times that you guys have come in, and it's been different configurations of folks, whether it was the lot split or whether it was the site plan that you guys have brought in. And I said, I will not vote yes for this if this is the configuration you continue with, and I will not vote yes for this. There is no way I can approve this. This is not a good layout. There are fixes for this, and you guys refuse to do anything about it. You keep bringing the same crap in front of us. And you, you've been told of this issue from the very first time you came in. As soon as this plan was in front of any of us, the first thing they said is, wow, that's not gonna work. Traffic backs up past there every single day. That issue was brought forward. And, and it wasn't, one person mentioned it, and the next person said, you know, feeding off of it. Everybody unanimously had the same idea that this is the absolute worst thing you could do. I will vote no unless this plan changes. And it's, Gina does a great job. She's a great traffic engineer. She's doing the best she can. But you can't, you can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. It's, 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 you can't solve this issue without either completely blowing up that whole area of the site or doing something different with your access. But the fact, yeah, and, and I'm not even as concerned of, you know, you've got two and your optional third lane. I'm not even thinking about the traffic backing up into the, into the aisle, but that could happen. You know, you get, you get overloaded one day, or the more, it, it could bleed in there. Where do they go? This isn't like Chick-fil-A that has fifteen-hundred feet of storage on their site before you even get to the, the Ring Road, which is also not a public road, yeah, but, and, and you'd have to go thousands of feet before to reach Route eight or eighty-two. It's not like that situation that's over there. This is, you're backing up and you're, you're two-hundred feet, a hundred-and-fifty feet from, from a public road. It's, it's, it's gonna cause an issue. And this is, it's just, it, it's not going to work. I've seen too many of these places. I've been in Gina's spot trying to help, uh, somebody make a case for something to try and make it work. And there's only so much you can do, but everybody in here has seen this traffic back up. When I saw the two-twenty-five in the report, two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet stacked, I'm like, I got on Google, measured where that's at, and like, yeah, that's where it goes. For, you know, these, the calculation is correct. That's where the, the queues, they, they reach down to about the doors of Hobby Lobby, which is well past your drive, your drive-through entrance. It's, it's...
I understand. I do, truly. I'm not trying to be argumentative. I truly understand where, where you're coming from. The only thing I think that is lost here is we are, we are an AM business, so the concerns that, that are seen.
Are you closed in the evening?
Just one vehicle.
Are you closed at four o'clock?
It's all it takes, yeah.
Are you closed on Saturday at noon? So you do expect to have some traffic coming in?
Yes, sir.
Then, then the problem's gonna happen, 'cause those queues are there during those times. It only takes one car to want to turn it. You don't need to have all fifteen. You don't need to have thirty cars turning. One car will then, and, and that, that driveway is busy. It's tough to get across from the parking lot to Hobby Lobby's front door, 'cause people don't wanna stop. And it's a constant flow, constant flow, constant flow of traffic. And if someone does let someone cross the road to get to the doors, then it's constant people, and the traffic backs up from that. If we could move Hobby Lobby's doors farther south, we would, to get it farther away. Why would we put another obstruction hundreds of feet closer to the intersection that's gonna potentially back up to eighty-two? I won't do it. I won't approve. Now, it's been suggested before, flip the thing. Have them come in somewhere else. You guys have ignored that. That was suggested the very first meeting you came in. Haven't heard a reason why you can't do it. Haven't seen you bring a plan that shows it. But that would totally change the whole flow of the, of the park. Nobody would necessarily need to be coming right around that. They could go down, get past the queue, come down a parking lot, come back up to it, go through. Now, you're gonna have a real pain in the butt getting out and doing anything but make a right out of there at various times of the day. But it sure would be a heck of a lot better than this. This is, this is terrible.
Well, I, I would just like to say, I've been, I've been in this role for sixty days. So I will look at, I will look at your suggestion here, as now I'm, I'm more in charge of, of this. But I'm not sure, just hypothetically, how flipping it and having everybody exit out into where you're talking about the problem is, is better than having the traffic go away from that. But I'll, I, I'll take your suggestion.
And I guess, and I don't know that it solves the problem either.
They both suck. It just sucks a little less.
It's, that's the, it does, it sucks a little less.
Because you're not trying to get people to turn left into there and potentially backing it up further into the plaza.
I, I understand.
You may never get out of the drive-thru.
Yeah.
If you're trying to take a left at four o'clock, you're gonna sit there until six.
And that's gonna potentially then back up your business.
Right, but that's an internal problem to the, to the business, not to the public road. And that's the problem, is it's gonna bleed into the public road, and we're gonna have police officers down there directing traffic, not your staff, because you're gonna have stacking and queuing out onto eighty-two.
So hypothetically, if we, if we did, I'm just talking about that. If, if we did flip the, the side plan, is that, that's something you'd be more open to?
I'd be more open to, but I'd probably wanna look at it a little closer and, and really see, you know, that's just been thrown out. It hasn't been vetted at all. It hasn't been, you know, I haven't looked at what the implications of that are.
I'll say, say, I'm still concerned because we're still having traffic in there. Yes, it might be better, but now we still are dumping more into the same problem area when they leave your establishment. And, you know, I've gone to your, what's it, Parma, Parma Heights location and stuff. You guys do a good job, and you bring cars in and stuff. But you bring a lot of cars in, and you send a lot of cars out, and, and your success is kinda the problem in that area. It's, it's really unfortunate. I'll just say this, this is on the record and it's on video, that whoever the developer is or whoever owns the lot a few thousand feet, you know, to the west, isn't willing to do whatever it is you guys need to do, because that seems like an ideal spot to put this business, but...
Or trying to push it south in the parking lot, closer to the Cleveland Clinic or something that seems like that could, granted, yeah, you're not right up on the road.
Plus, there's two coffee shops right on eighty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, what I'm proposing, it's right across the street from Starbucks.
We're not doing feasibility study.
Right, yeah.
So I, I, okay, so, so, I mean, I don't know, we've kinda beat the crap out of traffic. Does anybody else have anything that they wanted to say?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the only other thought I had was, you know, if we're not working, we're, we're working with a lease parcel now, and there is a little bit more flexibility, you know, even if we met, if we met, they met halfway and ended up ninety degrees at that northeast corner of the parking lot, they'd be in the same rhythm as all the other businesses along eighty-two. And then you're pushing all that stacking and feeding in that corner where it is, you know, you can, you can bring in a lot of cars off of Commons Boulevard and, and then you leave open the opportunity for people coming in, um, in front of Hobby Lobby to turn left in a, in a much more varied, um, you know, I'm, I'm impatient. I wouldn't sit there waiting to turn left, knowing that people are backed up behind me. I would just say, okay, I'm gonna go farther up, and knowing that I could still capture the building and get into the, feed into that, um, stacking lane from that direction. Or, you know, if people know, once people, you know, see it's there, they're regulars to the center, they know that coming in off Commons Boulevard is gonna, you know, be a, a better way of getting in there. Yet you still have that visibility in eighty-two. I, I'm just, I mean, I guess we just kinda wanna throw out suggestions that are gonna like be really more beneficial to the, to the business model as well. Um, because if I'm waiting to turn left and I can't get in, I'm not gonna go. So, um, I think we wanna, we would just wanna see it be successful. At least that's my, my standpoint, why we do this.
Well, thanks. Um, I guess we should probably circle out, just to, to bring up some of the things. So, architecture, you guys said you're, you're pretty much gonna just comply with, with the Commons. Is there anything you wanted to talk about that we should bring up?
Yeah, there, there is, there is a couple of things.
Okay.
And since the, the side layout and that's in question at this point, I'll, I'll skip the trash enclosure issue, and it's, and it's, it's a big one, but I'll skip that.
Well, I guess, let me just ask where do you find I'm putting that if you do flip it? Because I guess we should just come right out and say that we won't approve it if it sits eighty-two. If it's visible the way it is right now on eighty-two, it's not, it's left of one, we can move it.
There's a, and, did we bring up, did you bring a plan? But it's, um, I...
From, from memory, we're moving, they were moving that to the other side over here. Now, there's a, there's a slight window. Here, you can, those are multiple copies. Here, those pass, those are around. Oh, shit.
You need more up there?
I think we have two.
We have two.
Talk to one. So, okay, so I see with the front, is, I guess, is that the gate's kinda opening towards... To the northeast, point towards...
Yeah, correct.
Oh, it's over there.
So while there's, um, there's a slight window between buildings of visibility, it's almost, it's almost nothing. It's, it's not gonna be prominent. It's, I guess, down a few feet anyway, behind our building.
I think it needs to move a little bit to be aligned behind your building personally and there's a couple of reasons. One, those gates don't, every, if those gates fly open, which they always do, it's gonna end up going out into that traffic aisle.
So these are the gates here on the north.
Yeah.
East.
That's my personal opinion, I think it needs to be behind your building.
Can the gates go on the south side and then landscape that, so it's just not a big, big square?
You tried to lose the parking spaces.
Yeah.
Oh, you would definitely lose the parking spaces.
Be sure that someone, 'cause those are actually typically used by-
Elba.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a problem with the parking.
And, yeah, getting a truck in there could be tricky.
Yeah.
Well, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, just looking around the other outlots, how do they typically do it? It's usually, it's, it's right up against the building and I guess you guys have been opposed to wanting that to be part of your building, is that?
We initially proposed the, the trash enclosure to be right behind the, the building and storage and I believe that it was that suggestion that we'd move it to the, the location that was proposed here. I could be wrong.
Yeah, I think you're wrong.
But that was facing, it was facing-
Facing.
Yeah, I mean, it's facing, it never met the setbacks. Until tonight, we had no idea that you were doing a lease.
Yeah.
So, you know, how am I to evaluate something on an unscaled plan that has setbacks with, with, with wonky, I'm gonna say wonky, wonky lines that make no sense. You have two front yards and two rear yards. I don't care what attorney says what, there is no way to define it otherwise. So, yeah, maybe we said it should belong somewhere else, but so should the coffee shop. This is not a good site for this use, but neither here nor there.
Are you guys still leaving the cooler enclosure separate from the building?
Uh, no, there, that was one of the other items that was major, so there, we're going to move the cooler up against the building so it looks like, I mean, it will be one building by my definition of it anyway. So it'll be one building and the building code's definition of it. So that'll just, it'll just move up against the, the surface part of the building.
I mean, is it still gonna be separated, just the, have you-
No, no, it's gonna, it's gonna be-
You're pushing it up again, okay, okay.
Yeah, and the, and the brick veneer, okay, so I use the word veneer, it's an architectural term, so all brick is veneer. So they say brick veneer is allowed. I just wanna make it clear that we're using a full brick that's three and a half by eight by two and a quarter nominal.
Standard base.
Standard base brick, yeah.
'Cause anytime I hear veneer in the architecture world, it means it's a thin brick, but-
No, that's not true. All brick is veneer.
That's not attached to the building.
Okay, so that gap doesn't exist.
You're gonna locate it, it would be to the rear of the building if you were to flip it?
No, we're, well, right now, as it, as it's laid out now, we would just scoot it, we would just remove the, the open between the two. It wouldn't move back or forward.
And you're not integrating it into your building because it's a modular building, like-
Right, no, you still have to, you have to come outside and go into dry storage and into the-
Right, but the reason you're not just putting it inside the building, internal to the building, is because it's like a modular building?
Correct. Yeah, that, that's a big driver to that.
And they only make those modular buildings in one size?
No, the, the issue is that the approval process through the state is, is extensive. So getting, I mean, it's not, it's not like submitting to a building department, a local building department, they, it's a long process. It takes months and months.
Because it's like a pre-engineering network over there.
Yeah, and it's gotta go to the state review and I'm, I'm not gonna make any judgments on that, I just know it's, it takes a long time.
Is there a reason you guys didn't bring updated plans to show all this tonight?
Uh, with, with, so, oh, what, the building?
Showing the building connected and everything like that?
Yeah, well, it was the, the, it was late in the process that we found out we were kinda getting beyond this, this agenda, so, there was, really wasn't time to complete the drawing and also do renderings of all the changes.
Because it's common sense.
But it basically just moves that cooler up against the building.
When you say up against, you're saying that that gap won't exist anymore?
That's what I'm saying.
'Cause that's in that color poster there too.
Well, this, this one, this is the, this is currently, the current design shows an opening between the modular and the dry cooler.
So that's gonna-
So we just go up against the building.
Okay, so that drawing is inaccurate, 'cause it's changed.
Correct. Well, it's, we're proposing that we would change it to the, the comment. And then, so that's, that was number two, kind of addressed the brick veneer comment. So we'll try to take veneer off, I missed one last time. I, I took veneer off there, so that's, that's not a holdup. We can take that off of the, we can not, we can keep refraining from calling it a veneer. And the HVAC C equipment, we can, it will be completely screened, but I didn't show it in any of my drawings, 'cause you can't see it, so, 'cause it's hidden.
We need to-
They brought, they brought the side walls off the parapet walls, it'll be completely hidden. And we brought, we brought materials and I, I don't know if we leave those with you or if we just present those, this is the brick that we're planning on using. It's a, it's a modular, so modular in architectural terms means that it's, you know, eight by two and a quarter by three and a half nominal.
Al, that's something that we wanna hold on to and let Pam see it, or, you know, if we, if we can, or, is that, gets it, so I don't know. And, and without taking it out and looking at it near and sure, I could say, "Oh, yeah, looks good today." So I guess, you know, maybe that's, leave that up to you, how you-
Yeah, I'll, if you can give me some samples, I will run it by the, yeah.
If you don't mind.
Work, you're welcome to.
That would be helpful.
And then the other item, I think, was, along with the, the brick, it wasn't a specific comment to the materials that we called out for the roof, but the Pam, the consultant, mentioned that any, any asphalt shingles have to be three-dimensional and matching Macedonia Commons. And with the, with the manufactured building, doing asphalt shingles is, it changes a lot, it, it changes quite a few things. So the, we're proposing to do a textured metal roof, which, this is gonna be much more durable than a, than an asphalt shingle. This'll last the life, the life of the building. So we're proposing to use this textured metal as opposed to asphalt shingles.
I don't know if the district you're in allows for that, I'd have to double check the code though. If it allows for metal shingled roofs.
Have to ask her to drill them.
I haven't looked up the code, I don't think it allows.
Yeah, I, I looked, I can't, I'm not gonna pretend that I can recall in memory, but I didn't see a prohibition of, of metal shingles, but there's a lot of language about matching, adjacent and that kind of-
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Well, we, we, we can leave the shingles, that shingle and the brick for ear review and I think the, the other items with the 3D soldier course and the revised drawings that you do have, where we showed soldier course at the top of the, you know, accenting and providing relief on that side of the cooler that was a prominent part of the building that we added relief in terms of the, the, like faux windows that are on the side. And from way I read her recommendations, there was, you know, a big issue with the location and the gate space in 82, but that our revisions that we've made to the details, the soldier course and those items, made the building a, a design that fits nicely into Macedonia Commons.
Where's HVAC in the building?
It's in the, it's up in that roof part and then there's some that's behind.
This section here?
There's some in here and then there's some inside that raised parapet area.
Are you pretty, are you confident that that's not gonna be visible from 82, which sits higher?
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's like three or four feet higher, may, maybe more than architectural drive-by guess, but to be able to see anything, 'cause we're gonna be six inches above the top of whatever it is, minimum, and at that angle, you would have to be quite a bit higher than just three feet to see it. And we, we could demonstrate that with a drawing, you know, like a-
It might be nice just to make you feel comfortable, just 'cause it's, 'cause of that difference and it's hard to picture how different it is than what does sit down. Okay, so I guess, sounds like architecturally, you've got some things to look at, you've proposed some things, you've addressed, it sounds like for the most part, comments will be addressed and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that in the next , I smell, but, did you have anything else?
Yeah, is the, the LED Asia band?
Yeah.
The light band, does that still be proposed?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's something that the commission has not permitted in the town center district. I think I noted that in the, I did not.
And we've had a couple of different, I'm trying to think of who we've had, wants to do-
Taco Bell?
Taco Bell.
Who's the most recent?
Yeah.
Where is that? Who's comments were those, Brian?
It must have been. That was your comments?
The LED band? Yeah, it was number nine in my, my report.
Mr. July, do you have anything else?
Oh.
Good.
Bye. Yeah. No, I just would like to ask, before I said anything to Pam, should you get the traffic approved or looked at first? I mean, we, you know, who's gonna say, "Yeah, the building looks good," but if we don't approve the traffic, I mean, that's all for nothing.
I mean, that's, that, that seems to me to be the biggest issue. Second biggest is probably the dumpster and the buildings getting there, it sounds like they're gonna agree to it, so, building stuff probably is not as pressing, at least-
Right.
-from deal breaking type stuff, I guess. And, 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 and we take a step back, you know, I threw up, reversing the building, that was something that you should consider. I'm not saying that we would approve that, I don't know, Scott was just looking at it now, he's like, "Well, it's gonna jam with everything on the other side." But I'm not sure if that's, you know, maybe that's okay, maybe it's not, I don't know, I just know getting it away from that entrance on that side, right where all that queuing is at, whether it goes down or goes somewhere else, is, is something I'm gonna have to see before I would, I would vote yes. Commission, you guys got any other, think you wanna talk about?
Nothing.
Chris?
Not the pylon, can I pick on the landscaping a little bit? Just, there's two plants I wouldn't use. The nandina, it's a bamboo and it's really not totally hardy to our zone. I would just pick, there are plenty of native ornamental grasses or even just an ornamental grass that's hardy to zone five would be great. And then the purple leaf, Japanese maple isn't gonna make it out there. I'm not sure if you were thinking of purple leaf sand cherry or something, but tiny wine, a nine bark would be a much better choice and it's lower. I don't, I think some of these plants might get too big and then they would block the views around, so just those two things. The other, the trees are fine, so, but I did wanna put that out there and I, I feel bad, 'cause I know you said the landscaping was good, but it's-
You're a-
That's what I pick on.
You're a Chinese estate architect. I heard you're expert.
I appreciate that.
I'm just appreciative there was more sod placed and, so.
But I just wanted, 'cause I, again, we want the, we want it to be successful, you don't want dead plants out there, so, I think those would, those would be suitable alternatives. You get the same look.
So from a traffic standpoint, can I?
Yeah.
Okay, from a traffic standpoint, other than moving the building or things like that, like just looking at the traffic impact study that we submitted, the comments that we received were all very easy to comply with. Is there anything else that we can do?
Just from your, I guess, the-
Yeah, I mean-
Did you submit detailed comments on the report?
Yeah, we did and they were minor and to her point, I'm sure they're all easy to comply with, she has a technical point of view, the traffic study is, that, that's fine, I guess, but it's the, the practical situation out there that we just, that's the problem.
Wes, I don't think, I don't think the city's looking for any off-site improvements-
No, yeah, not, yeah.
-on public roads, none of that.
Say that again?
On the public roads, no off-site improvements, you're not looking for that.
No, 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 that doesn't-
There's no additional turn lanes, no build on 82 or anything.
That doesn't really affect the issue.
It's, it's all internal flow, which I don't know what you could really do additionally.
Yeah, I wish I had a solution for you, but besides-
Help the team brainstorm or something and if there's, if they come up with some idea, help them poke holes in it, 'cause we're gonna do it here and try and, you know, that's maybe your most useful to the team, is try and predict what we're gonna say to an alternative. But I guess with that, there, there's, it sounds like there's, there's a good bit of stuff to be addressed. It's good to know that you're not doing the lot split anymore. Now, does anybody else have anything, give one more final chance? I, I think I'm gonna make a motion to table this to, probably to the July meeting, unless you feel like can address everything by Friday, 'cause it sounds like, I think that's the deadline. And if it goes farther, that's fine as well. I think to, to address comments specifically to traffic, so I'll, I'll make that motion to re-table this to the July meeting.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna hold on to that.
We need their samples.
Yeah, Nino. Give those to Nino, as long as you guys are okay with him holding on to those for a little bit.
Yeah.
Just leave me a little grab.
Yeah, you can take those, Joe's things.
I know, I saw it.
In this situation, it just, it, it happens. All the times are consistent. Thank you. Oh, no problem.
Let's do it on a short period. We'll have discussions for a minute.
All right, anybody have anything else? I think it's the last thing on our agenda.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't follow.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Is, is the lease or something?
All in favor?
I didn't follow. The point is, what difference is making to the lease?
You got the cold thing going around?
Yeah, it's that thing.
I got two, two kids in my house, it's just a matter of time before I have it.
I mean, we're gonna do that, we're gonna think about it.
Like the younger-
You know, you really got it and now the older one does.
Oh, no.
Maybe.
Yeah.
I'm coming. Get me a slab.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.